Sometimes it's easier.
Yeah.
Okay, eight o'clock now, so we'll call the meeting to order and everyone can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public discussion, anyone?
Are we doing the dogs on the cat today?
Yeah, go ahead, this would be a good time to talk.
Alright, I just actually.
If you want to come up to the podium to state your name and then.
My name is Pat, by the way, I'm relatively new to the county.
Sure.
And as usual, I'm late to the party, so if somebody could explain to me what started this, what situation or whatever happened, so that I know what the goal is, that would be a wonderful thing.
Yeah, so initially, since I've been on the board, the main complaint has been from a group up near a church in Lox Creek, and there's been some dogs on the loose and.
So what is the situation?
The situation, and there's been a couple other various situations with dogs approaching people, people can't get out of their cars, cemetery, various things, so that's kind of the driving force behind it.
Alright, well, that's good to know, I wanted to be on the seventh page with y'all.
Yep.
Okay, I'll go for a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, well, then I have no other discussion, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes, dated April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Motion by Stecker, need a second?
I'll second.
Second by Haas. His hand raised. Any discussion on the agenda in minutes? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Then we have the second reading for the proposed Cassuth County Animal Control Ordinance that addresses animal control within the rural areas of Cassuth County. And I will read that with the minor language change here. Alright, ordinance number seven oh one, an ordinance establishing animal control in Cassuth County, be it enacted by the Board of Supervisors, Cassuth County, Iowa. Section one, purpose, the purpose of this ordinance is to improve animal control within the rural areas of Cassuth County while also accommodating humane and effective methods for managing community cat populations through trap neuter return, TNR, programs. Section two, definitions, the following terms are defined for use in this ordinance pertaining to animal control. A, dog means a domesticated quadruped descended from different wild species of the genus canine, as the wolf, fox, or jackal. B, cat means a domesticated animal of the feline family. C, community cat means a cat that is unowned, free-roaming, and may be cared for by one or more residents in the area known as caretakers. A community cat is distinguished from other cats by its participation in a TNR program and meets all the following requirements. One, no person owns the cat. Two, the cat has been assessed by a veterinarian and deemed healthy. Three, cat has been spayed or neutered. Four, cat has been vaccinated for rabies, feline rhinotracheitis, calysevirus, and panlucopenia. Forgive me for those. And reasonable attempts to re-vaccinate cats in accordance with the directions of a veterinarian. Five, cats must be ear-tipped by the veterinarian making the health assessment, and after determining the cat is spayed or neutered, has been properly vaccinated and has no known owner. D, domesticated animal means any animal that is tame and has been selectively bred and genetically adapted over generations to live alongside humans. E, at-large means any dog or cat or any domesticated animal found off the premises of such animal's owner and not under the control of a competent person, restrained with a motor vehicle, or housed in a veterinary hospital, or kennel, or pen. The premises of such animal's owner should not include any public property. The premises shall only include private property. F, owner means any person owning, keeping, sheltering, or harboring a dog, or cat, or other domesticated animal. Section three, dogs or cats running at large. It is unlawful for dogs or cats to run at large within Cassuth County. The owner of any dogs or cats found running at large is guilty of this section. However, a community cat shall not be deemed at-large unless the cat has been deemed a nuisance by a law enforcement officer pursuant to section six or is visibly sick or injured. Section four, at-large slash nuisance, summons. The owner of any dog, cat, other domesticated animal found at-large or a nuisance in violation of this ordinance based off the complainant's detailing the time, date, and duration of being at-large, or a nuisance, and/or photographic or video evidence submitted by a complainant. The complainant may be required to appear before a proper court to testify to the charges made for violation of this ordinance. Section five, animal at-large prohibited. It shall be a violation of this ordinance for an owner or person in control to permit or allow any domesticated animal to run at-large or to remain at-large. Community cats participating in a TNR program are exempt from this provision. Section six, animal nuisance. It shall be unlawful for any person to permit an animal under such person's control or within such person's custody to commit a nuisance. An animal shall be considered a nuisance if it a, damages soils, defiles, or defecates on private property other than the owners or on public walks and recreation areas, unless such waste is immediately removed and properly disposed of by the owner. B, causes unsanitary, dangerous, or offensive conditions. C, causes a disturbance by frequent and habitual howling, yelping, barking, or otherwise, or by running after or chasing persons, bicycles, automobiles, or other vehicles, molests, attacks, or interferes with a person or other domestic animals on public property. For the purpose of this section, nuisance shall be defined as anything which interferes with the enjoyment of life or property. The law enforcement officer may determine if a community cat is a nuisance and shall use information obtained from citizens complaining about a community cat and his or her expertise to determine if a community cat is a nuisance. Section seven, impoundment. If upon investigation there is probable cause to believe that a domesticated animal's continued presence would impair the safety or peace, a law enforcement officer may apprehend and impound the domestic animal. The officer shall provide written notice of impoundment to the owner if the owner's name and current address can be determined. The notice shall be sent within two days after the domesticated animal has been impounded. The notice shall provide that if the owner does not redeem the domesticated animal within seven days from the date that the notice is delivered, the domesticated animal may be humanely destroyed or otherwise disposed of in accordance with the law. Notice is delivered when the officer mails the notice by regular mail. An owner may redeem a domesticated animal by paying the costs of impoundment. If the owner of the impounded domesticated animal fails to redeem the domesticated animal within seven days from the date of delivery of the notice to the domesticated animal's owner, the domesticated animal may be disposed of in accordance with the law. If the domesticated animal is destroyed, it must be destroyed by euthanasia as defined in Iowa Code, section one six two point two. Community cats that create a nuisance may be captured and impounded. A community cat may be returned to the area where captured unless the property owner or the caretaker of the property where the cat was captured requests that the cat not be returned, or if the cat is too sick or injured to be returned in the opinion of a veterinarian. A community cat may be processed for disposition under any options in this section. The county shall have no liability for the disposition of any community cat. Section eight, penalties. After receiving two prior warnings of violations of this ordinance from any law enforcement official, any person violating any of the provisions of this ordinance is guilty of a simple misdemeanor. Any person convicted of such violation shall be punished by a fine of not more than eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and not less than a hundred and five dollars, Code of Iowa, section three thirty-one point three zero two, parentheses, two. Section nine, repealer. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section ten, separability clause. If any section, provision, or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section, provision, or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section eleven, effective date. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication as provided by law. Yep, thank you, we can move to discussion decision to approve the second reading of proposed animal control ordinance that addresses the animal control within the rural areas of Cassuth County.
I make a motion to approve the second reading.
We have a motion by Whacter, the second by Stecker. Any discussion on the proposed animal control ordinance?
Just thank you, the language is, I feel, addressed everything we talked about.
Yep, appreciate you working on that.
One comment.
Do you have a question?
The seven-day notification period, people have a tendency to take week-long vacations. I'd like to see it extended to ten days, just in case. Because it would really suck, you take off, you leave, somebody's in charge of your pets, you get back, and you're like, oh crap, the county killed my pet. And I didn't even know about it because I got on vacation, just a thought. I knew it was a burden of the county.
Yeah, plus, it would have to be an incident that would happen, and I mean, even in that case, it'd be something hypothetically happening the first day they're gone for it to.
Does the board have any desire to?
I think there's also the piece that there's two warnings required. It's not like Josh is just going to go on vacation and his dog's going to be gone seven days later, you have to have two prior warnings, so.
Before euthanasia, because that's not the way I.
Correct.
Two, yeah, two prior warnings before it's even eligible to be a crime.
Are the warnings related to the specific pet or to the owner?
Be to the.
Probably to the owner.
Owner, I would assume.
Owner.
And I think it's also important to recognize euthanasia is a may, it's not a shall euthanasia. So, I think in situations, if the owner is on vacation, and the dog gets loose, or cat, domesticated animal gets loose, preferably there's a caretaker, they're taking care of it, who would be able to provide the notice to the owner and say, look, you know, we need to get this dog or cat from the pound, we need to pay for the impoundment. You know, I don't think that, unless the owner goes and leaves the pet alone for a week, which would be wrong, you know, I think there's enough protection in there. And I don't believe long-term fortune is going to go to euthanasia. Even in the extreme situations, I think there's going to be an effort to try and prevent that if at all possible. So I think in situations where there is habitual violations of it, I think, you know, the reality is an intent is going to be made to try and correct it prior to any extreme situations.
And these are also written warnings, so there could be multiple verbal warnings before that if the officer's discretion.
Correct.
So.
I think that, in my understanding of the sheriff's reason for having the ordinance presented to the board was there are situations present in the county now where we have vicious animals going after people at church, going after people in the neighborhood that they reside, and some sort of law to help try and curb that or prevent that to hopefully get the owner's attention that this needs to be followed and ordered. I don't think the intent was ever, and I, being the son of Glenn and Aaron, would hope that this would not be the case where it's just a seek and find and destroy type of ordinance. I think it's going to be a situation where, you know, we're going to try and curb it as often as we can, and then if it's not something that can curb, find a more appropriate place for the animal for, you know, if at all possible. And euthanasia being just the last resort when there just isn't anything possible that can be done.
The only thing that we proposed by law mentions is euthanasia. It doesn't mention how to.
No, it says.
It's up to discretion of law enforcement on how to proceed there.
It says, if the owner of the impounded domesticated animal fails to redeem the domesticated animal within seven days from the date of delivery of the notice to the domesticated animal's owner, so the animal's owner has to have the notice delivered to them. The domesticated animal may be disposed of in accordance with law. Disposed of doesn't mean euthanasia. Yeah, yeah, there's, yeah. If it is destroyed, it must be destroyed by euthanasia, but that's a may. Quite frankly, I think that even, I don't know, it's not something that happens regularly, so I have nothing to go off of, but I assume adoption or possible delivery to a rescue place that has people to adopt out, I think those would be.
I want to see a vote.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think this would catch anyone for surprise on vacation, I guess. So, I wouldn't be concerned about changing those.
And that part of it is the state of Iowa law, that's the code of Iowa. This isn't new to the board as far as that provision of the impoundment and euthanasia.
And before you vote, so the third and final reading will be next week at eight o'clock? Is that correct?
That'd be fine.
That's fine.
Okay, any other discussion? Do a roll call vote, please.
Haas.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Whacter.
Yes.
Ma.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous, second reading is approved, thank you. And then we'll move on to discussion decision to approve salary for employee transferring to the Cassuth County Attorney's Office. This is a discussion moved from last week to the day.
I can move that.
What's that?
I can move that, that doesn't.
Oh.
That's okay.
We'll just put it up here.
Todd, did you have something you were wanting to say?
Just, I mean, I think you guys were interested in knowing my position on it as far as the salary. In looking at it from the parameters of what is set with the wage scale, I think my view in kind of justifying where Deb should start by way of wage in my office is although she has three years of experience with the county, it's in a completely unrelated type of area. Unlike some of the other transfers that may have happened in the past where it's a transfer from, you know, a position that focuses on more office work to another position that focuses more on office work. The types of duties and responsibilities differ significantly. And so I looked at it, in my opinion, from the standpoint of, you know, if this were in the private sector, and if I was hiring someone in my law office, you know, what would I, I base my decision as far as the start of wage at? And, you know, someone who comes in who may have zero experience in that type of setting would certainly start off on the low end of the scale. Someone who comes in with six, ten, twenty years of experience would obviously start off on the higher end. So in looking at that from my standpoint, given the parameters, as I mentioned, with the wage scale, I do believe that it would be appropriate to start her off on the base of the wage scale, the forty thousand, that's my position. I understand all of the other arguments, and it doesn't really fit neatly into that format. And what may or may have, may or may not have been done before, that's where I'm coming from, just as an employer, trying to figure out what is fair. Because, you know, as I mentioned the last time, I have another employee who left for about six months and came back, and she had six years' experience in that position and had to start at the base. So I can only focus on my office and how it applies to my office, and that's what I think I would have to recommend for a decision. It's up to you how you want to do it, or how we want to address this in the future. Obviously, it's somewhat of an unforeseen situation as far as past practice.
Thank you. Oh, thanks for your thoughts there.
I'll entertain a motion to any effect if anyone's ready for that.
I make a motion to start the employee transferring into the county attorney's office at the biggest wage.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Haas and second by Stecker. Any discussion on that?
The only thing I want to say is that I feel that these resolutions that we did, I feel like it did take a certain aspect of things out of the hands of our department heads and elected officials. You know, every, I know you cannot have every single situation, you know, you just can't. But like, the situation with the employee that left and came back, yeah, that was specific experience to those job duties. And so I do think it's a little bit unfair for the department heads not to be able to, you know, adjust that on their own. I believe they need that saved, because we just talked about the experience being important, and that's why we approved the last one, which I get, I get all of Todd's points as well. But if we're taking that into consideration for this particular reason, then we should think about it for other reasons that you just brought up.
I agree with that wholeheartedly, and, you know, we operate, we're independent elected officials. And, you know, it's, you know, it's the board's, at least, one of their many responsibilities to make sure that those types of approaches are similar in nature, even on transfers. And, you know, I get concerned when I, in my office, do what I have as far as my parameters set out by the board, and then when it doesn't necessarily go across the board, it causes me some concern. But that, that's just my thoughts on it, it's obviously your responsibility to do that.
And we can work in, with the handbook in the future to clarify some languages needed in that.
Yeah, and I would agree with that, outside of this conversation, ideally before this comes to the board's agenda again, I think we do need to have a detailed conversation about setting up a stick, more standard process instead of qualifications on how that gets handled or whatever, so that it can be uniformly applied across the board.
And I know this is part of the topic, and one of the things we'll be working on the handbook here over the next several weeks. You know, you can attempt to address every potential issue, and you'll be unsuccessful, because you just can't picture all of it. So what I would suggest, and what I will suggest to the department heads when we meet, is that they're, instead of trying to address every single potential issue that comes up in a handbook, provide some flexibility as opposed to trying to cover all of them. Because the flexibility would be, you know, the peculiar situation where someone, you know, comes in and has that experience elsewhere, but is not necessarily a county employee on a transfer, that they can have, or at least a department head or elected official has the ability to start them out with the board's approval at a higher level. That might be an approach to take to resolve this issue. That's why almost every job, applicate, or job notice that you see in the paper on the private side, in the private sector, says commensurate with experience. You know, salary would be commensurate with experience. And I think we're obviously trying to attract the most qualified and talented employees for the county.
My last thing is that's where sometimes past practice is a good thing and sometimes it's a bad thing. You know, past practice sometimes comes back to us.
Okay, well, any other discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Haas.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Whacter.
Yes.
Ma.
Yes. Okay, motion carries unanimous, and thank you.
And I know we have the budget here and come on up, I will be present as long as I can. I have depositions at nine thirty.
No worries.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
If we, let's see, Dan, your update is next, we do have your update. We also have a group of EMS personnel here this morning. I know they have to get to work at some point here, too. So if we could do a real quick update, or.
Real quick.
And see if we can get to both of you here.
I'm all about being brief on the brief. Okay, so just some metrics from my office as of last month. Forty-one phone calls, fifty-nine messages, twenty-eight walk-ins, twenty-six scheduled appointments, two of those out of office. We did two veteran transports, submitted seventy forms to VA, currently tracking twelve hundred and fifty-five veteran records. Got forty-two claims in the system, nine that are ready for decision, fifteen that I'm developing, and one in the supplemental lane. Currently for training, I'm registered at the State Spring Conference, actually completed that, that was last week. Had a hundred and twenty-two VSOs present, so it was a good training event. I am currently registered for the National Conference in Kentucky. Actually, that should reflect, reflects July instead of June, but I'll make that correction. Also enrolled in advanced appeals later next week, that's computer-based training. I will also have the mobile medical unit here in June for their next visit. And then just some of the highlights for the ad hoc reports. Currently with awards year-to-date, looking at a little over twenty-five thousand, four hundred dollars, and retro benefits, a little over forty-eight thousand, two fourteen. A couple of other things, I too am going to be heading over to St. Benedict here shortly. We have a veteran, Brad Till, and Brad recently has been selected and approved for a business value grant that he applied for. So Secretary Nag is coming out to his orchard and his farm. I got a phone call yesterday, so I'm going to head over there to meet with Brad and meet with the secretary and congratulate him on that award.
That's awesome.
So that's a big deal. House files two fifty and two fifty-nine, I put two fifty-nine in your packet. Kind of codifies and solidifies our education requirements, our personal identification verification card, and some of the ancillary changes that are affected by that. The other one was Senate File six seventeen, which is not in your packet, but that talks about the Iowa Veteran Trust Fund, that it's funded by the lottery. That's going to be increased from fifty million to seventy-five million. And then, of course, the Iowa Lottery will continue to put two point five million dollars to get to that seventy-five million. The takeaway to that is our ten K grant is funded with those monies, and also the Iowa Veterans Trust Fund is also funded with those monies. Speaking of which, they did redo the Iowa Veteran Trust Fund application, and so I've got to study that and go through all the changes to make sure I'm current on that. And with that, subject to your questions, that is all I've got.
Thank you.
All right.
Yep, real quick, did you have a date for June for that medical unit? Did you have a date for June, or?
It's in.
For, June four.
For the medical unit, it just says June.
Oh, I'm sorry, I knew, I can shoot that to you, I don't remember, I don't remember off the top of my head which Monday that is.
I can look, I think it's on the calendars, and Dan, let me look.
We'll get to the date.
All right, sounds good, thank you everybody.
If you just want to introduce who you've got with us here, and the update pertaining to them, and if you have anything extra, we'll do that after the budget here.
And we can start that later.
Yeah, you can start.
Oh, we can start that later, okay. All right, well, do your update then, Phil.
Yeah.
You want to do the whole update?
Do the whole update.
Well, first of all, I'm going to introduce these guys in case you call and have to leave. A couple, three weeks ago, I was here, and I told you that we had three people that had passed the initial test, the national test, pertaining to class in Clerk hours. That was Ellen, which is the first one here. Evan Ballinger, who is still at Iowa State University, will be joining us full-time in Little May. And myself was the third one that passed the class first. Recently, just in the last week, we had two more that took the test and passed on their first attempt, which is Kristen Nonley and Hannah Hill. So we had seven people total from Cassuth County in this class. We have five that have passed on the first attempt already. And we have two more that'll be taking the test here shortly. This class had a forty-eight percent pass rate statewide, and we have five of the seven that passed the test on the first attempt, so. So I guess I'm just, I'm proud of the people we have, the dedication, the quality of employees that we have. It shows their dedication by taking this class and achieving the goal that they set up to do. So we're now, we're moving up, we're a better place than we were before, and we'll be fully staffed here shortly.
Very good, congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
Eight thirty, you want me to keep going, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, finish out your update, yeah.
We have a couple of things.
I'll be brief. Call lines kind of been all over the place lately. February, we had a hundred and thirty calls, March, we were down to eighty-seven calls. We only had. We only had ten transfers in March. Usually spring, April, March, February, March is usually slower. April to date, we're still down. We've only had eight transfers so far this month. And we had two last night overnight, so. Year-to-date, we're just shy of twelve hundred calls and we'll run around that fifteen hundred. So we're on track, um, overall for staffing-wise, as I mentioned. We do have one person that's off that had surgery on Friday. He'll be off for six, six weeks or, or more, depending on how things go there. We do have two new, new people hired. We do have one new paramedic that's starting next Monday. He'll be joining us next Monday, the twenty-eighth. And then, as I mentioned, Evan, as an EMT, will be joining us May nineteenth. Public Safety Night Out, we're working on that. Advisory council, our next advisory council meeting will be May sixth at five PM. Financials are looking very good. Remain under budget. Uh, just a quick revenue. Our projected revenue was two million twelve dollars. To date, we're at one point eight five eight. So we're a hundred and fifty thousand dollars under projected revenue with two months left to go. So we'll, we'll like see our projected revenue. Expenses to date, we were, we're at one million two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, which is sixty-four point six seven percent of our budget, with seventy-five percent of the year complete. So we're about ten percent under budget on, on expenses as well. Big project we have coming up is we're doing state inspections in May. Would be every service in Cassuth County being inspected the same day. So I'll be busy preparing for that and getting everything in place for those inspections. That's our big project working on right now. Questions?
Were you ended up with the testing equipment or sort of getting certified?
Um, I was gone last week. So that's on the agenda for tomorrow. He'll be back tomorrow to work, so we're gonna work on that tomorrow.
Yep, thank you Phil.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and decision to approve the quarterly reports for auditor recorder sheriff and veterans affairs.
Any comments from anyone on those reports?
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I'll take a motion to approve the quarterly reports then. Motion by Stecker. Second by Garmin. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries unanimous. And then we'll do the discussion decision to approval of elected official compensation schedule by resolution number zero four twenty-two twenty-five zero one. I need a motion. Motion by Stecker to approve the elected official compensation schedule. Need a second? I'll second it. Any discussion on the compensation schedule? If not, all in favor... Oh, excuse me, roll call vote please.
Hoz.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Wachter.
Yes.
Nah.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. And then we are up to the FY twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Cassuth County Budget Public Hearing. And I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Motion by Wachter, second by Stecker. Any discussion on the motion? If not, uh, or roll call vote please.
Hoz.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Wachter.
Yes.
Nah.
Yes.
Public hearing is open and I'll hand it over to you, Dan.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. For those that don't know me, I'm Tami Eden, the Cassuth County Auditor. Um, and this morning I'm gonna be presenting the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Before I get started, I want to say thank you to Doug Miller and the Engineers Office. Every year they put together this presentation for us. We give them the numbers and they, Doug personally, this year, um, does that all, puts the presentation together for us. And then Melissa Arndorfer from our office is helping with the slide presentation. And of course, without the help from my office, this would not be possible. So thank you to all of them. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started here. Give me just one second. Okay. The first slide that I'm gonna start with shows our current fiscal year tax example. The pie graph on the left-hand side shows the property tax distrib- distribution from a property in the city of Algonah. Forty-seven point eight percent of that goes to the city of Algonah. Twenty-eight percent goes to the Algonah School. Fourteen point four percent goes to Cassuth County. The county trust receives four point three percent. Iowa Lakes Community College receives three point four percent. And the county EMS receives two point one percent. The pie graph on the right-hand side shows the property tax distribution from a property in Burke Township. Forty-seven point nine percent goes to the Algonah School. Thirty-two percent goes to Cassuth County. Five point nine to Iowa Lakes. Three point four percent to the township. Three point six to county EMS and seven point three percent to the county trust. The next slide shows the county's revenue details for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. The numbers I will be going through are under the budget twenty-five, twenty-six column on the right-hand side. Taxi, taxes levied on property, twelve million sixty-four thousand sixty-six dollars. Less credit to tax, taxpayers, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Which brings our net current property taxes to eleven million six hundred and four thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars. Penalties, interest and cost on taxes of nineteen thousand dollars. Other county taxes, which includes mobile home taxes, grain handle taxes, money and credits, taxes on loan agencies and credit unions and local option, or, um, and credit unions of six thousand eight hundred dollars. Local option taxes, six thousand eight hundred dollars. TIF tax revenues, which is tax increment financing, five hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Utility replacement taxes, six hundred and five thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars, which brings a subtotal to two million five hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Our intergovernmental revenue, the state shared revenue, six million seven hundred and eighty-six thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars. State replacements against taxes levied, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Other state tax replacements, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand three dollars. State and federal pass-through revenues, thirty thousand dollars. Contributions from other intergovernmental units, three hundred and eight thousand five hundred dollars. State grants and entitlements, eight hundred and three thousand four hundred and seven dollars. Payments in lieu of taxes, thirteen thousand dollars, which brings our subtotal to eight million six hundred and seventy thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars. License and permits, fifty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Charges for service, one million five hundred and two thousand one hundred dollars. Use of money and property, four hundred and sixty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars. Miscellaneous, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars. Our total revenues is twenty-four million nine hundred and ninety-six thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars. Our other financing sources include operating transfers in from general basic of three hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. From rural services basic, three million five hundred and thirty-six thousand two hundred and nine dollars, which is a subtotal of three million eight hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Our proceeds from general long-term debt, five hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Our proceeds from general fixed asset sales, fifteen thousand dollars, which brings our total revenue and other sources to twenty-nine million four hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars. And if you add the beginning fund balance from July first of twenty twenty-five of thirteen million nine hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars, it gives you a total resources of forty-three million three hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Our next slide is gonna start with, is gonna start off our expenditures, which are broken down by service area. Service area one is public safety and legal services. This includes ambulance, county attorney, district court, medical examiner and sheriff. And I'll just be reading the subtotals in each category. The law enforcement program expenditures, three million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and ten dollars. The legal services program, seven hundred and two thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Emergency services, two million four hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. Assistance to district court system, one thousand five hundred dollars. Court proceedings program, thirty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Juvenile justice administration program, thirty-six thousand dollars. Total public safety and legal services, seven million one hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. The next slide is service area three, which includes, which is physical health and social services, including general assistance, human services, mental health, general basic, elder bridge, sanitarian and veterans affairs. The physical health services program, one hundred and twenty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars. Services to poor program, one hundred and one thousand thirty-two dollars. Services to military veterans program, ninety-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars. Children and family services program, six thousand dollars. Services to other adult program, fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars. Chemis- chemical dependency program, five hundred dollars, which brings our total for physical health and social services to three hundred and forty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. Service area six is county environment and education. This includes conservation, nature center, fair, historical society, libraries and weed commissioner. Environmental quality program, thirty thousand seven hundred dollars. Conservation and recreation services program, six hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. County development program, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Educational services program, three hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars, which brings our total county environment and education, one million seven hundred and forty-one thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. Service area seven is roads and transportation. This includes the engineer and secondary road. Secondary roads administration and engineering program, nine hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Roadway maintenance program, five million four hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. General roadway expenditures program, four million seven hundred and ninety thousand five hundred dollars. For a total roads and transportation of eleven million two hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred and five dollars. Service area eight is government service to residents. Includes elections, township clerks and trustees, recorder and treasurer. The representation services program, one hundred and forty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. State administrative services, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars for a total government services to residents of a hun- one million one hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. Service area nine is administration, which includes the annex, the auditor, the courthouse, election center expenses, custodians, IT, GIS, unemployment, CPA audit supervisors and human resources. Policy and administration program, one million six hundred and ten thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. Central services program, one million four hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars. Risk management services program, eight hundred and thirty, thirty-six thousand five hundred and ninety dollars, which is a total in administration of three million nine hundred and nine thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars. The next slide is service area zero. This is non-program expenditures, disbursements and other financing uses. This includes conservation, re- conservation reserve, crisis intervention, transit, technical services, care team, ISAC, RSVP and tourism. The non-current, non-program current expenditures are seventy-four thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Capital projects, two million six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Total for all service areas, twenty-eight million one hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. Our operating transfers out of three million eight hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars, which brings our total ending fund balance for June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five to eleven million three hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which makes our total requirements forty-three million three hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Now, if we break this information down into pie graphs, this is what it looks like. So for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, um, revenue, it's expected to be through thirty-nine million four hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. This includes our beginning fund balance. So where does our revenue come from? Thirty-five point three percent is the beginning balance. Twenty-nine point three is property tax. Twenty-two percent is intergovernmental. Six point four percent is other tax. Three point eight percent is charge for services. Two percent is miscellaneous and one point two percent is use of money. So where's our money going? So our total expenditures for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six is expected to be thirty-nine million four hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. Twenty-eight point seven percent of that is gonna be our ending fund balance. Twenty-eight point four percent is roads and transportation. Eighteen point one is public safety. Nine point nine is administration. Six point eight is non-program and capital projects. Four point four county environment. Two point eight government services. Point nine percent health and social services. So if we take our expenditure breakdown and subtract our ending balance, thirty-nine point eight percent goes to roads and transportation. Twenty-five point four to public safety. Thirteen point nine to administration. Nine point six to non-program expenditures. Six point two to county environment. Three point nine to government services. One point two to health and social services. And our ending balance, or our total expenditures minus our ending balance, twenty-eight million one hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. So our estimated beginning balance, July first of twenty twenty-five, is thirteen million nine hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars. Thirty-nine point eight seven percent of that is general fund. Thirty-one point five four secondary road. Seventeen point percent is others and eleven point five nine percent rural services. Our estimated ending balance, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, is estimated to be eleven million three hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Forty-two point three six percent in the general fund. Thirty-four point two one percent in secondary roads. Thirteen point five three rural service and nine point nine others. So now I'm gonna be going over, um, a tax levy example in the city of Algonah for our current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So that's the fiscal year we're currently in. And this, um, pie graph, it shows a house assessed at a hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. If you times that by the state rollback of point four six three four two eight, you get fifty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighteen cents of taxable valuation. If you multiply that by the mileage rate of thirty-five point five zero seven four per thousand dollars of valuation and you subtract that from the homestead cr- uh, you subtract the homestead credit of a hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-one cents, you'll get a net ta- net tax of one thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and eight cents. Of that one thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and eight cents net tax, forty-seven point eight one percent of that goes to the city of Algonah. Twenty-eight point oh one percent goes to Algonah schools. Nine point three eight percent goes to county general basic. Four point five one percent goes to county general supplemental. Three point four three to the community college. Three point zero four to the hospital. Two point one one to county EMS. Point seven six to the assessor. Point four eight to county rural services. Point four six to egg extension and point zero one state levies. Now, if we take an example in Burke Township for the current fiscal year that we're currently in, if we... if we take a hundred and sixty-eight, a hundred and sixty acres at the average of one thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents, it's three hundred and one thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty cents assessed value. If we multiply that by the state rollback of point seven one eight three seven, it equals two hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and fifteen cents. If we multiply that by the millage rate of twenty dollars, point seven 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 point zero two per thousand dollars of valuation, we get four thousand five hundred and five dollars and thirty-five cents. We subtract the ag land and family farm of fifty-three dollars and forty-five cents. The nut tax is four thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety cents. Of that nut tax, forty-seven point eight seven percent goes to the school district. Sixteen point eight five percent goes to county general basic. Seven point four six goes to county rural services. Seven, I'm, yeah, seven point seven goes to county general supplemental. Five point eight seven to area colleges. Five point two percent to the hospital. Three point six one to county EMS. Three point three five to township. One point three zero to the assessor. Point seven nine to ag extension, and point zero one state levies. Our last slide of the day is gonna show you past, current, and proposed tax examples on the same properties. There's two different properties we're gonna be talking about. One is a rural property, and the other is a town property. In fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, that, um, land value, or that ag land value was two hundred and eight thousand ninety-six dollars. The general basic levy was three dollars and fifty cents, which brought, which made our ta- the taxes for general basic, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. General supplemental was one dollar and thirty-three cents, which made the taxes two seventy-six seventy-seven. EMS, seventy-five cents, hundred and fifty-six dollars and seven cents. Rural basic, one dollar and fifty-eight cents, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. So on that rural property in twenty-three, twenty-four, the total, um, tax levy rate was seven dollars and sixteen cents for a total of one thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents in taxes. That was a change in property, um, doubt, that was a change in previous dollars from the previous year of a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents, which is a change of ten point one four percent. On that town property taxes in twenty-three, twenty-four, the value was fifty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-four cents. The general basic levy rate, three dollars and fifty cents, with, which brought taxes to two hundred and eight dollars and fifty-three cents. General supplemental, a dollar thirty-three, the taxes were seventy-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. The EMS, seventy-five cents, taxes forty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Which was a total in taxes of three hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-five cents. That was a change from the previous year of forty-six dollars and seventy-one cents, which is sixteen point three five percent. In fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, that same property is valued at two hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and twelve thousand twenty-three dollars. The general basic levy, three dollars and fifty cents, which was taxes of seven hundred and forty-two dollars and eight cents. General supplemental, a dollar sixty, taxes three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. EMS levy, seventy-five cents, taxes a hundred and fifty-nine dollars and two cents. Rural basic, a dollar fif- one point five four nine zero two, total taxes of three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. The total levy rate, seven point three nine nine zero two, which brought the taxes to one thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. That was a change in dollars of seventy-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents, which is five point two nine percent. In town, that property value is now in twenty-four, twenty-five, fifty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighteen cents. The levy rate for general basic was three dollars and fifty cents, which brought taxes of a hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty-four cents. General supplemental, one sixty, taxes of ninety-one seventeen. EMS levy, seventy-five cents, taxes forty-two seventy-four. Which made a total levy rate of five dollars and eighty-five cents, which brought in taxes of three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. That's a change in previous dollars of eighty-nine cents, and a change of point two seven percent. In the proposed fiscal year, twenty-five, twenty-six, the general basic levy will be three dollars and forty, three point four six five three five, and the assessed ag land taxable value, two hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. The proposed taxes for general basic, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty cents. General supplemental levy, one dollar and seventy cents, taxes three seventy fifty-eight. EMS, seventy-five cents, taxes one hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-nine cents. Rural basic levy, one point five three three six eight, taxes of three hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. That brings a total levy rate of seven point four four nine zero three, and taxes of one thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. This is a change in previous, from the previous year of fifty-five dollars and two cents, which is a change of three point five one percent. For that town property, the value is now fifty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-five cents. The general basic levy, three dollars and fifty cents, which is, uh, taxes of two hundred and four dollars and twelve cents. General supplemental, one point six zero, taxes ninety-three dollars and thirty-one cents. EMS, seventy-five cents, taxes forty-three dollars and seventy-four cents. Which is a total, um, levy rate, five dollars and eighty-five cents, taxes of three hundred and forty-one dollars and eighteen cents. Which is a change from the previous year of seven dollars and eighty-three cents, um, which is an increase of two point three five percent. And that is the end of my presentation. Um, copies of the budget, the actual budget, are available in the Cassius County Auditor's office if you need one. Um, the budget and graphs are also available, um, at, on our website. And if you have any questions, um, the board and I would be happy to answer that. Yes, please.
Thank you.
That's a lot of information in a short amount of time.
Actually, I, I, yeah. Can you run through, can you explain the rev- the expenditures again? Um, how you got to thirty-nine? Thirty-nine million?
So, let's see.
And then, actually, no, the, yeah, and the revenue. Because looking at number twenty, like line twenty-six, it doesn't quite.
Okay, so it's not, it's not gonna, okay, so, you're talking.
Let's go revenue.
Okay, hold on. I find that page here. So slide.
Third page there.
The pie graph.
Page eleven, what whole pie graph? Eleven of nineteen.
I'll get to that.
Yeah, are you, are you asking the total revenue?
I'm asking how you got to the total of, of thirty-nine.
It includes the beginning fund balance.
Okay.
So you have to add that beginning fund balance in there, and that adds up to the thirty-nine million.
So that should be line twenty-six, total revenue?
Should look at, like, page three.
Yeah, page.
Are you looking at the forty-three million dollar number?
Um, I'm looking at revenue details, line twenty-six. And then compare it as a pie chart. I'm trying to find out, I'm trying to understand. Understand how you get from twenty-four point nine to thirty-nine point four.
Well, let me grab the presentation and I'll contact you.
Sure.
Line thirty-four plus. Twenty-six plus, yeah.
Yeah.
Add line twenty-six plus line thirty-four.
Yeah, you have to take the transfers out.
Okay.
So you can't count those operating transfers.
And those are from general basic and raw basic?
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
If I were gonna do my simple math, if I take the increase in revenues and then add the difference in the ending fund balance, is that the difference of spending from last year to this year?
Okay, so say that one more time for me to.
If I take the dollar value for, of increase in revenues from our new taxes, and take that money plus the money of difference in ending fund values from last year to this year.
No, because you're gonna have other sources of revenue coming in besides the taxes. So it's not gonna be just taxes, you're gonna have other revenue coming in.
But, but, so we're spending more than those two numbers add to give difference?
Yeah, we're gonna be.
So do you know actually how many dollars more we're spending total than what we spent last year?
Four hundred some thousand dollars.
Yeah.
But why is our ending fund?
But the tax increase is higher than that.
Our tax increase.
But fractional dollars.
Yeah, but he's asking why the fund balance is going down, so it's the difference in total revenue that's brought in versus total expenditures that are planned, but the, the tax increase is, isn't that six hundred thousand something, total tax increase?
Yeah, I don't know anything.
Between all three levies, I'm pretty sure.
I know it's a hundred and some for general basic.
Yeah, I.
And I didn't add up what the increase in is all the levies.
But it almost looks like our ending fund balance is gonna drop nearly two million dollars.
Correct.
Between all the funds.
And so we're spending that much more than the four hundred thousand?
Well, our beginning balance is gonna be less too, correct, than the previous year, so that has something to do with it also.
These, these figures are taking in the, um, worst-case scenario, of course, compared to what this year's going to be, but they, but we don't know how we're going to end up a hundred percent until June thirtieth. So what you're looking at is if every dollar was spent and every dollar was received. So it's not always the exact picture. Uh, if you want an exact picture of how this year is gonna turn out compared to last year, June thirtieth would be the time, um, to look at that. Um, when we're doing this, we're not, we're taking in the worst-case scenario.
Yeah, it, this is just projected numbers because we don't know what our ending fund balance is gonna be, which means we don't know what our beginning fund balance is gonna be.
And typically, not every dollar is spent. Um, usually our revenues tend to be a little bit more than what is projected, but, um, you know, departments, if they don't spend all of their dollars, that goes back in, which, again, is a projected amount.
Any other questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Garmin. Second by Stecker. Any, any discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? If not, a roll call vote, please.
Hoss?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker? Whacter?
Yes.
Nath?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, public hearing is closed. And then we'll need a motion, uh, for the adoption of fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget and certification of taxes by resolution number zero four twenty-two twenty-five zero two. Motion by Hoss. Need a second.
I'll second.
Second by Whacter. Any discussion on the motion?
I guess I have a little bit. I, I appreciate the discussions we had this budget cycle and the, um, demeanor of the board getting through that a lot better than previously. So I do wanna make that statement. I think the discussions we had, in large majority, were good. Positive discussions. There's a couple pieces that I'm just not quite comfortable with, which we discussed in detail as we went through the budget, but, um, I guess I don't know what extent to elaborate on that at this point, but I did, just wanna make a couple brief comments.
Sure. Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right, then I'll, we'll do a roll call vote, please, then.
Hoss?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
No.
Whacter?
Yes.
Nath?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one. Thank you all for coming in, taking your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Switch gears a little bit here. Oh, yeah, yeah, we can take a five-minute break, that's fine.
You don't have to do it now, but.
Okay.
There's some that the rest of the board has to sign too, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that stuff, yeah, and that resolution. All that stuff too.
It is, because you have to add it, you put that to the state. Yeah, and five hundred, yeah, together, you only have to. Seven hundred and thirty. Okay.
I will do. So he's done a whole row this year. But I've been saying, you know, it's making, and then sweep the road. That sweep the road for, right, for public safety.
The person that's important.
Yeah, it's on the front. First line is on the front page.
So how long before your, uh, UTV discussion?
Oh, let's see.
I wouldn't expect.
I, I don't think it, I don't think it'd take real long, yeah.
Are we going to just go with the states, or are we adding something to it, is that, what are we?
We've already done our own, um.
This is, or, you go ahead, I didn't have to.
No, we've already done our own, this is, the changes that were requested was to allow them in our Cassius County campgrounds, our own facilities. I do have a comment I'll make at that point, when we get to that topic, about correlating maybe a little better with the state stuff, but, you know, we already did our own UTV ordinance. I remember when that was originally done, was it last year, the year before?
Because it gets tough when you go from one county to another county and shift public, because I.
And that was like one of the things that was talked about.
I know that's a city ordinance up around Oklahoma, but if you get within their city limits, you have to slow, have a slow-moving vehicle sign at a certain distance from the ground.
Yeah.
And if you don't, they like to give you a fine because they know you don't live there.
It's like when you drive into Minnesota with an Iowa driver's license.
Well, that's why I know we're gonna stay with the county, or the state, because then the state is the state and it's uniform.
Yeah.
You start getting, everybody's got a little bit different, it's scary.
There's pros and cons to that, but.
Yeah.
Something kind of wrong with the beginning fund, early balance, probably like a million and a half.
Yeah. The end income balance this year is already gonna be lower than last year. And, and so that, that kind of is the area into that. You know, if we were to just remain satisfied. For fund balance, this year we'd still be less. They would have multiple factors. Well, yeah, I want to. That's hard, you know. Dollars. That's somebody. That's somebody. County is all, county is a service. Organization. Do you remember this?
You know, and everything. Not like. Everything just costs a damn much money. Insurance, like at home. I mean, I know everybody's tired, I'm saying, yes, it is. But it's not just housing insurance, it's all I know. Like my land insurance don't realize that, like, how small a town you're in. I'm not saying, I changed things, but I, I went to five thousand.
I'm just learning what.
You were all sorry, but. Well, you know about.
Really? You didn't, you didn't watch it?
String down here, oh. My buddy's got a nice John Deere tractor. And the planet what we're. And he had. Unmoved client right where it sat in the field. And it's, it's fifteen hundred dollar circuit board right here. Nobody in the state of Iowa stops. And when they called John Deere, the availability was five days. Five in the morning, because it was five days to get a circuit board for five years. Pay off the line, you know, with a time to drive or whatever. And it's, you know, the. Some secret videos is a good friend of mine. I know what I said, I'll shoot from the top, say eighty percent from my. But, but.
How he's happening.
That. Proverbal circuit board, or it might even be computer, if you, you'd like to think of a camera, should you fix locally one way or another, you know, create a log or a bearing or whatever. But I'm telling you, if you find here, I'm not beating for that, this is my interpretation of. I hear suggestions, you know, K S I, for example, for a brand.
That would be.
K S I is somewhere in the middle. I, I would tip, I, you should, I, I stop the whole freaking system, you know, and get John's. If they went down. Day two of twenty five day run, day months. Because if, if you need me, you're gonna call me night high or night low, I won't. No, you can't afford to wait, no, because first of all, this year, the guys are trying to hurry. Are they right or are they wrong, who they have knows yet. But Indiana was telling me, don't plant, don't plant, it's too cold, they're expecting thirty-five, which is raining. Uh, that makes for a hell of a compaction. When the sun comes. The things, I, I said. I, I said. There was growth. And I like, we do have the best growth we can afford, the better than. We are. I really like to. I'm not, but that, I understand how you. You've done it fast, you don't see a great future coming towards us. You see a change, like change through the summer. And you, you change.
Yeah.
But you look textbook. Or you gotta go eighteen months, so it's negative, you kinda have a hell of a positive, but you have that negative. Because.
I have a different situation, it's hard, like. Personal life. Changes. Change here.
But I've known it for four years, so. But you can't throw a quiet body. But I can hold a large. The report on Rachel actually proposed somebody where it's grounded. Five hundred plus, five year.
Probably advanced.
Yeah, well, five year. That's. I don't know. It mostly depends on the other family. Well.
Yeah, so, um, I'm just gonna come in to.
They just, they. Well, movement. They don't care, it's a property. They're just moving their money.
Yeah. So I talked to Will yesterday. And the little things that we should do. Seventeen minutes. I talked to him. That's what he said. This is what's gonna happen, um, after the six percent maze in July, or four percent maze in July. So, um, four.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Um, that's what there's gonna be, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't. Yeah. So that's what they will be at after July first, we're starting six months. Where they are now. So, yeah, and so you think. Are you thinking? So do four seven?
No.
Like I'm thinking. Eighteen, nineteen, twenty, so I'll take that off.
That, I mean, that is, when I was doing the figures, I thought, that's kind of.
Something can be. Benefits are, I don't see what that would be. Yeah.
They did a great.
And that's why.
Of course. Anywhere you have a U T V of your grass and your park. I hammer the suckers with the maximum fine you can get on them.
Yeah.
That's what we need to educate people to stay the hell where they belong.
No, and, and I.
Cause I don't, I like to try.
I talked to you yesterday. He was concerned about that.
Like, I'll, I can go where I want, I know. Give it to courts.
So I don't need that to change.
No, I could do it anyways, but with campgrounds out there, you ever. Since our support. People. Hey, get on your pitches.
Right, sure, yeah.
And then if that was good enough for the court system to say, hey, buddy, that would help, it would be great. Paying parts.
Compared to others, okay.
Okay, we're all back and ready to go here. Uh, gonna begin with a discussion decision approval of public pur- purpose for economic development expenditures by resolution zero-four, twenty-two, twenty-five, zero-three. Need a motion to approve that resolution. Motion by Stecker. Need a second. I'll second it. Any discussion on the resolution? If not, roll call vote, please.
Hoss?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Wactor?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Any sign that?
Yes.
Okay. Did you get all the other papers back?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Signed, oh.
Powers on.
Okay, okay. Uh, discussion decision approval of liquor license for River Road Golf Course. Need a motion? So. Motion by Wactor.
Second.
Second by Garmin. Any discussion on the motion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. And we have. Do I need to sign that too? Alright. Signed lots of things today.
Yes, today's a big day for signing.
At least I won't forget I wrote my name.
There we go.
Okay, and we have a discussion decision to set wage scale for housekeeping position.
Um, so I've done a lot of talking, I talked to Will, he was on vacation, um, last week, so I didn't have a chance to talk to him. Um, and he works directly with the housekeeper here and in the annex, um, and so I did a bunch of talking with him. We wanna make sure, like Amber alluded earlier, um, we wanna make sure that we have qualified, good applicants and, and good employees that come in and. Um, we need to pay, we need to pay in order to get those, so, um. I am suggesting, or hoping, that we start the housekeeping salary at eighteen dollars an hour, go to nineteen after six months and twenty dollars after one year. Um. That's gonna bring, um, to forty-one thousand, six hundred dollars, um, for the year, which I think is a fair salary. Um, they have a lot of responsibility, our courthouse and annex, I think, has a good reputation for being clean and orderly and we wanna keep it that way. Um, we've had great housekeepers and we wanna make sure that we're attracting the same, so. Um, I, unfortunately, my plan was to find out how much, um, of business pays to have housekeeping come in, um, I'm sure. Twenty-five to thirty dollars, but I don't know, and then figure out with our, um, benefit package what that would average out to be, unfortunately, I ran out of time to do that, but. Um, I don't think eighteen, nineteen and twenty is out of line for housekeeping position, so that's what I'm asking for.
That's good.
We're currently at fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Correct.
Right?
And, and that was set in twenty-twenty-two, um, and I think we were probably, um, a little bit low at that point. We should have been higher then.
Right now, we're at fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, your request on the.
Nope, I changed.
You changed it, okay, okay.
It's now, um.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen is what year?
No, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Eighteen, nineteen, twenty is what you're asking, okay.
With the end wage of, or would you rather have a motion?
Forty-one, six hundred.
What do you think?
Yeah, we can, we can have a motion and then we can discuss it or.
Alright, I have a motion to, um, go with the recommendation of our copy auditor. On, uh, the wages of eighteen, nineteen and twenty.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
That's eight.
I'll second after this.
Okay, second by Wactor. Motion by Garmin, second by Wactor.
It's eighteen starting, since in nineteen after six months.
Nineteen, six months.
Twenty after a year.
Okay.
With forty-one, sixteen and, and base seems pretty fair, um. You know, under the forty thousand dollar wage base is. You know, in these days and times, it seems awfully low, we really would like to have an individual that comes in and keeps the. The housekeeping as good as it has been in the past, we have been very fortunate and our buildings are impeccably clean, I will say. There's never any complaints about that. And, um. I didn't put those there, that's, that's all. Um, plus they do work forty hours a week and, you know, four days a week is, you know, longer work days, yeah, they're fortunate to get that day off. They're putting a lot of hours in order to do that in order, you know, to do the things. Effectively in a building like this.
Well, that's becoming more and more common, employers having four, ten hour days too, and it's not an unusual work schedule, yeah. Um, and yeah, I, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, if you're working forty hours a week, having, making forty thousand a year, that's. It's on the lower end of, of, of things in today's society, but, yeah, I, I, that was my question. Tammy, you mentioned it, that was my question, what does it cost? I know a lot of organizations and churches and, and whatnot pay to have things cleaned, uh, other companies, it would be interesting to know. What a yearly cost that would be, I, and I don't have the answer for that either, but.
No, but I do think it would probably be a higher wage, granted, I know we're talking benefits and things and, and so there's a little bit of compensation there, I feel like. Um, that we're giving up in order to provide those great benefits, so.
Yeah, I think those companies charge a lot more now, um, to go in and clean those places, but they don't have the benefit package.
A little bit I know. For housekeepers or cleaning people in the area. I'm sure it depends if you go with a company that's big or. A smaller deal, I mean, it's, it's not that out of line with like what you're asking for a housekeeping, uh, position here as far as their hourly rate, I. Some are more, some are less, but, um. I don't know, I just figured to know. Are, are we, are we talking five thousand dollars or are we talking twenty-five thousand dollars, cause it does. I, I don't know, just throwing it out there.
Yeah.
Saving by, by doing that instead, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that's not it, I didn't say that because that's something I'm looking at because I'm not.
Oh, okay.
I don't want to hire somebody to come in and clean on, on a contractual basis. I said it because I wanted to know in my mind, are we paying somebody with the benefit package comparable to if they went and got a job for a company cleaning? Is what my basis is, I, I am not interested in outsourcing our housekeeping.
Okay, alright, I misunderstood your.
Okay, sorry.
Bringing that up, I guess.
I, I guess. Coming into this with the expectation, we were talking about a one dollar an hour pay increase, I. I wasn't as concerned about it, but when we're talking a three dollar an hour pay increase, um, on top of the benefit package that we do offer. I think that. Be a little bit more thought and comparison than. I definitely put into it today and I don't know if anyone else could say the same, but, um.
Um, Will wanted to be in here for this conversation too, and I've tried to text him and for some reason it keeps coming back, not delivered, so do you mind if I grab him so he can answer any questions, would that be helpful?
We talked about having the, uh, yeah, maybe, uh, yeah, we talked about having a department, and I, I think this is a place for. H R to, to be here. And, and when we come to this, and I don't mean to get out of order, but when it comes to the. A T V ordinance and stuff for all county properties, the sheriff should be here for that. And everybody is paying, we talked about them paying attention to what was on the agenda, it doesn't seem to be happening, so, but yeah, that's fine.
Okay, yeah, um, I told him I would get ahold of him, but for some reason the message is not going through, so.
I'll try calling Dr. Fisher.
Call down.
Oh, yeah, call down at first, probably.
Does anybody know what a new hired jailer, what their salary would be?
Um, let me see what I can find.
Probably be at the first meeting of the year.
That's that's where I was going.
Oh, yeah.
Feel free to look too, but that's what I was gonna.
Oh.
More resources.
Okay. He's coming. I hear him squeaking.
Okay, thanks for coming in. Well, I'll catch you, catch you up quick. Um, I made the recommendation, um, and Amber has made a um motion. Um, my recommendation was to start the housekeeping position at eighteen dollars an hour, nineteen at six months, and twenty dollars at one year. Amber's motion was to go with that recommendation, and so now we're discussing that.
Okay.
They have asked HR to come over as well.
Try, try the next number. Try McKenzie or Kira. Get somebody else.
I don't know when we're gonna be to it, but.
Just for the ATV stuff.
Yeah.
I think they're discussing, calling people for the next agenda. I think maybe a question I've been asked too, and maybe you can answer this relate.
So we just wanted to see if you'd be available.
As custodians, do you not have time for for cleaning as in the housekeeping position necessary? You know, for your guys' time schedule throughout the week?
Well, they they changed, no, they changed it where this, it's time of maintenance and support of housekeeping.
Okay.
And the other person is totally housekeeping. They took the maintenance.
Took the maintenance away from the housekeeping position.
The housekeeping position, yes.
I see.
We didn't want somebody up on a ladder, changing a light bulb, or doing those kind of things that's here for housekeeping.
Understand.
And plus that that third person would be in the rotation of weekends checking on thing in the courthouse. So then we have somebody that's not certified in boilers, checking on things they shouldn't be checking on.
Correct, yeah.
So they basically, some, they still check the building, but if something goes wrong, they have to call me or Ron.
And, you know, does that include some help with the grounds as well?
Yeah, like the flowers, that kind of stuff.
Water bumpers.
Planting.
Well, planting the flowers, things I, you know.
Yeah.
I like to spray and they like to.
She plants the flowers, you kill the flowers?
Well, no, I don't kill them, but she just, if I had my way, I would.
So Donna, we're talking about the housekeeping position.
Okay.
Um, salary raise, or salary, since we have a new um opening, I'm recommending to start at eighteen, nineteen after six months, and twenty at one year, which would be a salary of about forty-one thousand six hundred dollars.
I guess how might I comment? I uh I don't know, I know what our insurance is today, I know what our retirement is today, and all, and the other benefits. It seems very generous to me to go up twenty percent in in one, in one, in one move to go from fifteen, sixteen, seventeen to eighteen, nineteen, twenty. I I can't speak with any confidence what things are in private industry, uh, other than the benefits are good here. I'm sure that I can speak with confidence in that.
Yeah.
And I, I'm sorry.
I did just find the salaries rough by twenty-four, twenty-five that would have been approved. Um, the question was in regards to jailers currently. Looks like we're in that twenty-three and a half ballpark plus longevity for jailers. So I I think that would be awful close. Um. I would echo a lot of Howard's comments. I'm I'm not gonna say that I'd be comfortable making that big of a jump on top of the other benefits that we offer. Right now, especially without much more information and really looking at that a lot closer.
And and I can see that if it was one year, but that fifteen, sixteen, seventeen was set in twenty-twenty-two. So it's not, it wasn't just set last year, so I'm not asking for a twenty percent increase in one year.
So I guess, so many different, no, oh, no, you're good. Um, so if so many numbers get thrown around, I can't remember what.
Yeah.
What we're talking about in the budget, does, does housekeeping get four percent? They do, okay.
Yeah.
Alright. I didn't say why they wouldn't, but I just, because it's.
Yes.
An hourly thing, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Kyle, what information are you wanting to, I'm I'm walking in kind of in the midstream of what you said, some more information, what information are you looking at?
I I don't know if I'd even have a list of what I'd want for information, but I, yeah.
I I've heard you never left. Uh, we're, we talked about department heads and people, applicable people being here for these discussions and asking department heads and applicable people to look at the, look at the agenda and be here, not be summoned, be here for the for the discussion that involves.
For wages? I guess I've never been.
You are now.
Discussion. Okay, but I'm, I'm needing to get caught up in what the expectation is. That's why I wondered what information. The only input I would have, I know, in three years ago, was my first um experience when we hired that position. The candidates that applied were very, um, a few of them did not feel like they could come work here for that wage.
Because the person that was the housekeeper before retired, so we hadn't hired anybody in that position for a while. So that's why three years ago, it was something new we were looking at, cause that housekeeper had been here and retired, so, um.
Think if I remember right, that they need that a little bit of a higher wage, I mean.
Yeah, they were, they were above that.
Yeah, they were high, yes.
So.
Yeah.
The the hope in this is that we're gonna get some, a wide variety of candidates. Last time when we applied for this at the fifteen dollars, we had three candidates.
Yeah, we didn't have much.
I mean, this, you can't, this place, I can't do it all.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Something's gonna fall behind. It, I mean, we gotta have a quality person in this, to to keep this building up and as nice as it is, it's not a joke.
Well, and I just think that if we want department heads and different employees and to be here during these discussions, we should also be open to what they're suggesting to us.
Uh, I guess, I don't, I don't mean my comments to say that I'm not open to the suggestion or the information, but I'm I'm not gonna say I'm comfortable with it right now either.
What was your jailer's dollar amount, did you say?
Twenty-three and a half ballpark.
Is that to start?
Yes.
Okay, that's the starting wage, twenty-three and a half. That's not what they make now?
No, I don't think so. Um, there's only one that's at twenty-four ninety-two, otherwise twenty-three eighty-four, twenty-three seventy-nine, twenty-three seventy-four, twenty-three sixty-nine, sixty-four. That's all of them.
Is what's on the agenda, the housekeeping position?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't understand why we're talking about jailers' wages. We are talking about the.
I'll bet you'll find a jailer will come over here for forty-one thousand and push a broom all day. I'm sorry, but they're out of line on.
Dick, uh, just the, the board's having a discussion here, so we.
On the housekeeping.
On the housekeeping position, yeah.
They're making more at across the street than what the housekeeping would be.
That what you just said?
It is.
It is.
I said twenty-three sixty-four, so that'd be three and a half roughly per hour.
Oh, that's about thousands of dollars a year?
No.
No.
Okay.
That's per hour.
I don't have the figures with me, but the jailer's starting wage is twenty-one something. And it goes up after six months and then at one year.
Yeah.
So the numbers you're reading off there, Kyle, employees that have been there for numerous years?
Right.
That'd be, yep, and I believe the only difference on here is longevity for most of them. Um, the senior jailer is a dollar or short dollar higher than that, so.
But that's a.
It is, but it, but it is a comparison that we should take into account. I mean, we got, whether it's that or any other positions, um.
The comparison of a jailer and a housekeeping position are two completely.
Not even close.
They're not even.
Not even close.
Should not even be part of the conversation. We are talking about a housekeeping position, and to just say that someone, it's very disrespectful to the housekeeping position to act like they just pushed a broom. This is a large building. They clean public bathrooms. Our public expects to walk into these buildings and have our facilities cared for. And and we're, we're gonna downgrade that? Yes, it it should be considered a good job, and that person coming into a good job will respect that job a heck of a lot more.
I don't believe a blank check on salary is required to get a good job accomplished.
I'm not asking for a blank check. I'm just asking for a fair raise wage.
And I respect your recommendation.
We only had three applicants last time, and how long has Deb been there?
Three years.
Three years.
Three years. Oh, since twenty-twenty-two. And that was at the forty, no, that, that was with, without the.
That was at fifteen, starting at fifteen.
Without the, or percentage increases last.
Well, they haven't gotten any, so.
Right, right. The first year maybe, but then she would have still been on that wage scale stuff, yeah.
And I can't speak for her, you know, nor should we, but maybe part of the reason why she's leading the position is financially.
Sure, I mean, she's moving up, taking a different job, I mean, yeah.
Right, and and if.
That's more power to her.
And if that's, if that's a benefit, we need to look at that. I mean, I don't think that what Tammy's recommending is like exorbitant and just this huge amount to, I I don't, but.
I would make a motion to amend the motion to sixteen dollars an hour start, seventeen at six months, and eighteen at one year. That would be my motion for amendment.
I didn't start writing quick enough. Can you say that again?
The same that's in our packet.
Okay, sixteen, seventeen.
Sixteen, seventeen, nineteen.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the original motion, um, changing the dollar amounts to sixteen, starting seventeen after six months, and eighteen at a year, as outlined in the packet. Okay, uh, is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Oz. Discussion then.
I guess I I wanna say that uh the relevance of comparing what somebody else, what other department's making, what other jobs they're making is, things are gonna, things spiral. So, so when the housekeeper is making twenty and the jailer's making twenty-one, starting, and so then somebody perceives that it's just, it just ratchets up one on the other continually. I must say, wages cannot be stagnant. They they have to go up. I appreciate that. I I think, you know, when you hired someone three years ago, I think you feel you got a good employee.
We were elected.
And I feel that the economic times are a little bit different, yes, for the economy as well, but a little bit different for as they were three years ago. And uh, I feel that the wages, I mean, a forty thousand dollar a year wages, I mean, these days, I, people don't think that's there, I guess. I don't really understand that, but um, I I have a lot of respect for the position due to, I know everything as being their employer at one time. I know everything that they went through and the things that they did, and the things that they were expected to do and change at at any given time. I've always had the utmost respect to how wonderful our building was. We want to keep that, and that is a service. We provide services here and and these buildings are very important. And I want to have respect for the people that were expecting to do that service and do it well.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do we have to do one dollar increments?
No. You can, you can um adjust that. There's nothing that says it has to be a dollar increase. It just makes it easy.
Well, I wanna make a motion, but I have to wait for that amendment to be voted on first, correct?
You can share your thoughts and discussion too.
My thought is, we need a higher starting wage to attract people, um, but a ending wage of twenty might be a little bit high considering, you know, the other factors and, um, my thought process to that would be if we just were to start at eighteen, go to eighteen fifty and end at nineteen, that'd be kind of a happy middle ground. Um, we're not jumping to twenty at at a year.
Ending at what?
Nineteen. So going eighteen, then eighteen fifty at six months, and then nineteen. I know typically jobs that I've worked where I started out, even in my IT, you know, from, it was not unheard of to get a fifty cent raise after six months. I mean, so I, that's my, my thoughts on uh having a little bit higher starting wage to attract more people, but instead of just jumping a dollar every six months to get to that year, um, I think fifty cents would be a little bit more reasonable. Uh, so we'd get to the nineteen dollars at the year, and I think that would be fair.
Thirty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty dollars a year.
I I'd entertain a fifty cent increase instead of a dollar to start at seventeen and end at eighteen, but I don't think I'd be comfortable going above eighteen for ending to, for today's discussion at least.
If it's an effort of compromise, um, I would entertain Josh's recommendation as an effort of compromise, um.
And I too, I too would be supportive of that compromise.
Yeah, I would.
Well, would.
I would be supportive.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's reasonable.
Yeah. I do agree with his thoughts on having a better starting wage. I I definitely do. That is, a starting wage is very important to.
So I know, I think you can go, I think you can go work at Fairway right now for eighteen dollars an hour as a, you know, about it where you're starting at. And it just, just given the power in the community, but.
I don't know that Fairway technically has the same.
No, no, no.
Package that we have for.
I I I know, and that's kind of, when we're just talking hourly wage.
Right.
There there are others that are lower than that for jobs that are listed in this community too, with also less benefits.
Yeah.
Like less job description.
I think we need to focus on what our job description is and what we're hiring for, I really do.
What, the motion that's on the floor, um, we'll, we'll finish that here, but, um, that's about a six percent increase, uh, just.
Are you just doing ending to ending?
From where it's at to to now, it's about a six percent increase, and then they'll get another four percent come July, so I mean, it's still a still a, it's a jump.
I guess, what's your point?
I I'm just, I'm just sharing it with the board, if you got.
No, but I mean, what wage are you talking about?
From the initial wage we're, like, we're Deb finished at now.
From seventeen to eighteen?
It's a dollar.
And, yeah, doing a dollar increase is a six percent raise on on that salary.
Plus.
Plus the four percent, yeah, within a couple months there.
So it'd be a ten, ten percent increase.
If they start before then, are we anticipating a start date for this?
Yeah, so, um, the deadline for the applications is May second, and so we're hoping that they will start by the end of May is our hope.
Okay.
But of course, they're gonna have to do it two weeks notice, I'm sure and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, they'll probably be hired by June sometime.
We're hoping so.
Yeah. We're not talking about increasing on the current person's wages. We're talking about just increasing our, what our offering is going to be.
Well, there is no current person in that position right now, so.
Well. Well. What we're not.
Yes.
Right, 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 yeah.
So we'd be looking.
And we're not creating a new position.
So, so in a month and a half, we'd be looking at a ten percent increase on the on the
Wage.
Wage as it was. Wage as it was, plus benefits.
Correct.
Two questions, so, uh, wherever we're at, we're moving from X to X plus to, to X plus, that's so when does the, when does the four percent come into effect?
July first.
I understand that. When is it, for a new hire, is it, uh, so if you start at I don't, start at eighteen or seventeen, whatever Josh said, you, uh, you're gonna go to four percent above that on July first, but it specifically says you're gonna go to the next level after six months, where are you gonna be at six months?
So the resolution will change July first. We'll have to change our starting six months.
So everything will go on?
All, all three levels of that wage scale resolution will be updated before the new fiscal year comes, so we'll have new figures for each category.
Okay.
Yes.
So how come it hasn't been adjusted? There has been no pay increase in three years, so.
Well, last year there was a zero percent, um, increase, and then, well, she, she started in July of twenty-two, so she would've had twenty-three and twenty-four.
Yeah, before that.
Twenty-three. I can't remember. And then twenty-four was zero.
Doesn't sound like things have ended crashing up the way it's been.
Yeah.
Well, probably would've been the start of that scale would've been after.
Yeah, she, she. In, in twenty-three.
Yeah, so the, just kind of the timing of how that originated and then the correlation with last year's zero would, would be the reasons.
My other question is, you know, I specifically asked for Donna to be here because she's HR. Does HR have any recommendations on the whole issue?
Well, I was gonna bring that up. I am worth of willing to be here, but quite honestly, when that resolution was discussed, I was not, I am totally clueless to that understanding of how that kinda came into play, um.
That's because it, with the HR attorney is the one that brought the issue to our to the table that we had previously, and, um, so they handled all of that, um, it was in closed session, so.
And. Yeah, I was gonna say, as a board, we had conversations in closed session about that.
Uh, yeah.
So I am totally, I mean, and, and so, I never in the past have looked at salary increases or differences, I mean, and I guess maybe that's just because I'm in my own little world, but usually that's within the department head. The only time that I've ever had the opportunity to discuss my wage is during budget time, so I, and I, I can't speak to what my recommendation would be. I just can speak to when we interviewed three years ago. The candidate pool was very reserved in accepting it based on that, that pay scale.
And if, and for a point, like, when we did the resolution, since the custodians had the resolution, does housekeeping?
They do, yes. No, they will be added to that.
No. So, so this is a good time to have that conversation and, and be, you know, at that point where we're doing that, like, and you know, Howard had a good point, that, that position has never been given that opportunity for that, having that kind of a base and an increase, so, I mean, it is good conversation to have that now and in an effort to make that a position that is
I agree.
open for absolutely no reason.
But I, I, I mean, the only thing I can speak to, I think you're talking about just pay increases, how, and they just happen. We don't talk about performance, we don't talk, you know, so again, we've gotta figure out what we're asking for, and that's why I ask, what information are you looking at?
Agreed.
Well, the reality of it is for the wage scale structure and how it has to be set up being a governmental employer, performance is not part of that equation, and whether I agree with that personally or not, um, legally, that's not part of the conversation. That is, everybody has to have the ability to make the same as someone in the same job description as what they are.
With the ability, but does that mean, what if I don't have that ability? Cause I know what I'm.
According to job description, if you don't have that ability, then you should technically be terminated.
Shouldn't be in that job.
You shouldn't be hired.
Yeah.
And whether that includes changing job, job descriptions to have different classes for skill levels, or whether that just means terminating employees that can't fulfill the duties of their job description, whatever that entails, um, if they're hired and working under the same job description, they have to be paid the same, with the exception of longevity. That is the only exception that you can differentiate on wage because of. And I think, not just for this topic, but longevity as a conversation is something that we talked about during budget stuff, we need to have later on down the road. So I'm not gonna beat that horse today, but that is the only thing that you can pay different within the same position is based on longevity.
Which is how the road department is set up.
Yes.
And has been for.
For a long.
Ever, yeah.
Same as the deputies.
Same as the deputies, yeah.
And maybe things have changed, but I know when I worked for another state agency, we had to have a performance evaluation that met the criteria. Maybe we didn't possess all those skills at that time before we were considered for the next step increase. It just wasn't an automatic.
I think.
So that's, I mean, so that's why I get a little confused. I mean, it was based on what your, what your outcomes were on the job description.
Well, I've had that question before. I think that department heads are really not sure, like, well, what are we supposed to do? It's, it's a resolution. It's passed by the board. The wage is there. What are we supposed to do? What if we have someone who's not, you know, it's it, all of this has taken completely everything out of the hands of our department heads and elected officials, and so I do think there needs to be a little bit more communication about that, but I know that's not exactly what we're trying to improve today, but I do feel like it, you know, presents some issues that are with the system a little bit that we need to address.
Yeah, and potential solutions to that would be multiple job descriptions within the same office or different levels, different, yeah, I mean,
Or class combinations.
EMS would be a good example. It was in your, you have your different certification levels, and each of those have their own set of
Yeah.
Uh, wage scale figures.
Quite honestly, a lot of it's just been how the circumstance presents itself. There isn't really a clear, so you're trying to come back to a system that maybe is clear and but the history has not been that way, so that's probably, and if you haven't talked to your department heads, your elected official, I can tell you I was clueless as to the basis of that resolution or what the outcome was, and quite frankly, it didn't impact me, so nobody.
Quite honestly, maybe that's something, I mean, HR can be present for those close discussions. I mean, it, the board can choose the people that are necessary to have in those discussions, so maybe in hindsight, he should've been in here.
Right, cause I would have no way to explain it to people. I can read it and, but the justification or the history or even my input is like.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and part of that was the timing of that decision. It was
Quick.
It was very quick, we, because of the timing of the budget, we didn't have a lot of, um, we didn't have a whole year in front of us to plan out for next budget year or anything like that. We, we had a very short time period. Not that that excuses everything, but, um, we, we need to have more detailed conversations to address the topic as a whole in the future, but that's, that's just not something we can have today, and, and it's obviously not on the agenda for that.
And that's, the wage, the whole wage scale thing, that's not really what we're voting on here. Did, Howard, did you get your questions answered?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have a, a motion to amend the original motion by Kyle, seconded by Howard to set the wage starting at sixteen, moving to seventeen after six months, and then going to eighteen after a year, and we're ready to vote on that. We could do a roll call vote, please?
Has.
After discussion, I'm gonna vote no.
Garmin? No. Stecker?
Yes.
Wacter?
No.
Nass?
No. Okay, motion fail, or amend, motion to amend fails, four to one, back to the original motion then.
I'll make the motion to amend the current motion to set the starting wage at eighteen, go to eighteen fifty at six months and nineteen at one year.
Okay, everybody understands Josh's motion? And made a second?
Maybe a level nineteen. Eighteen, eighteen, eighteen fifty, and then nineteen.
Your second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, second by Haas. Roger, you had to handle it.
I just wanna apply it later on. If you set that at eighteen, remember July first, it's gonna go up four percent.
Yeah, mm-hmm, we know.
I've, I've mentioned that.
When you commit it to that eighteen fifty, it's gonna obviously be difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll change what, we have to update our resolution, so.
Okay.
I second.
Yep, my second by Haas. Any further discussion on that motion?
Four percent increase on eighteen fifty would be nineteen twenty-four, so.
Well, that would be at six months, and you would make six months before July first, so they'd still be at eighteen.
Yeah. July first.
Yeah, but nineteen, nineteen with a four percent increase will get you to nineteen seventy-six, so you're almost at twenty anyway, which is.
Was there a second?
There was, yep, 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 we, we are motion second, so.
Yes, yes.
Everyone good on discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please?
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
No.
Wacter?
Yes.
Nass?
Yes. Okay, motion carries four to one.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Tammy.
That's just for the amendment.
That was the, for the amendment, and then now we're vote, that, that's the, the motion amend, carrying four to one, uh,
Oh, yeah.
Voting on the original motion here, then with that amended numbers, eighteen, eighteen fifty to nineteen, and let's do a roll call vote on the original motion.
Is, is that something?
Original motion as amended.
Original motion as amended.
Is this something that we need to act on today, or can there be more research done?
Well, I would recommend it because we're gonna be getting questions as, because the ad's been out for, will be a week now, so um, I need to be able to give people a solid answer when they're asking that, when they're applying.
I'll abstain from the vote when we get to that point, if that's the case.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, you know, you're calling for vote? Is that what you're doing?
Unless, unless there's, unless there's other discussions need to be had. Okay, we'll roll call vote on the original motion as amended.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
Abstain.
Wacter?
Yes.
Nass?
Yes. Okay, motion carries four to zero with one abstention. Okay. Thanks for being in here, Willie, Donna.
Thank you.
Uh, discussion decision for child abuse prevention month proclamation. It's in your packet. We do this every year. You, yeah, oh, are you, is that what you're here for? I'm sorry, I didn't know who, yeah, uh, you can, you can come up to the podium and state your name or whatever you need to say, yeah.
My name's Sheila Ware. Um, I, Jesse Hanson was supposed to be here today, but due to some sicknesses, she has asked me to step in. Reason she asked me is I've been on keratin for twenty-plus years. Keratin started because of child prevention, of child abuse prevention, and so I'm a big advocate of helping families learn. So, she had a couple talking notes on here for me, um, our vision as, um, our vision where all children and families are living a purposeful and happy life and hope the future, hope for the future by ensuring families have the support they need before challenges become crisis. We, we can create a, create a future filled with hope and opportunity. So I know prevention, or child abuse is a horrible thing to talk about, but if, the more we talk about it, hopefully, the more we can help prevent it. Um, why prevention matters. One in seven children in the U.S. experience abuse or neglect, um, but prevention is possible. Stable relationships and nurturing environments help children thrive and migrate adverse childhood experiences. Only fifteen percent of the thirty-three billion spent annually on child wa, welfare wages goes to prevention. So shifting some of them resources to proactive solutions, strengthen families and reduce the harm. A call to action, prevention is a shared responsibility by families, communities, communities policymakers and organizations as we must work together to provide support, um, but provide solutions and policies that will help um, invest, investments and uplift families before harm occurs. How can you help advocate for family-centered policies like paid leave and increased prevention funding, raise awareness, um, which is mostly what we're doing today, um, shared resources, engaging conversations, um, and conclusion as we recognize child abuse prevention month twenty twenty-five, that's to a future where every child grows up safe, loved and full of hope. Prevention isn't just avoiding harm, it's creating opportunities for families to thrive. Just some facts, she's got multiple counties on here, but Cassouth County had denial of critical care or neglect was forty-six cases. Now, this is twenty twenty-three. We don't have the twenty twenty-four numbers yet. Um, we had nineteen dangerous situations where a child was in a very dangerous, uh, four of those cases were actual physical abuse. Um, eight of those cases had illegal drugs involved. Luckily, at that time, only one case was sexual abuse, so we select twenty, or seventy-eight children just in Cassouth County had reported, and I'm gonna stress that word, but reported abuse of some kind, because I don't know the number. I know it's very high, are not ever reported. Cassouth County was also with the age range of the victims, um, five and under were sixteen kids, six to ten was ten kids, older than eleven was thirteen. So, the, the range of under five of kids that can't talk for themselves or help themselves, being sixteen of those kids was very critical, very sad. So, the more we can get the word out and we go around to the different counties and ask for the proclamation. And you have the proclamations, I believe?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Is there a motion to proclaim the child abuse prevention month? Motion, motion by Stecker, seconded by Garmin?
It's okay.
Sure.
Any discussion? Not, uh, do we need a roll call or we just?
No, it's either way.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay?
Aye.
Motion carries an answer.
Thank you.
Thanks for being with us.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion decision approved processing of claim for reimbursement of transfer tax under Iowa code section four twenty-eight A.
So this is a first for me. Um, this is something, I guess, that doesn't happen very often, but, uh, um, we had a law firm that, um, paid too much in transfer tax um, when they were handling a case, um, and so they had applied with, um, the appeal board, um, and did get a percentage of their transfer tax back, and they are asking for the balance of that to come from Cassouth County. Um, it's an amount of two hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-six cents. Um, according to the code of Iowa, um, the board has to approve that before that can be processed. So that's why we are here today is asking, um, for your approval to process that claim, and then it will be brought back to you again with the regular claims, but before we do that, you need to approve that process. I did talk to Karen, um, in the recorder's office, um, because it's through her office, um, she's only seen this happen once before, um, a long time ago. Um, so she couldn't remember how it really worked, um, either, um, but she is suggesting that, um, that this be handled, approved by you guys and then turned in in the claim process.
So, my reading through the packet and information that was there, it looks like there was two real estate transactions and the tax for the one was submitted for the other and vice versa, so then they were underpaid on one and overpaid on the other, and then they cured the underpayment already, but then to cure the overpayment, they need a refund, so. Looks like it was a somewhat simple mistake, obviously probably not common, but it looked pretty simple to me.
That's because of the number of agents involved or something?
Uh, it's the, yeah, it's just the total value of the two transactions. They were, they were.
So each transaction has to be rectified to the?
Yeah, and the one that was underpaid already has been rectified, the one that was overpaid, they need to refund back, the state already approved it, so.
It was going moving the money from one to the other, evidently not.
I would've thought that would've been the easiest solution, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm not in the recorder's office, so I don't know how that works.
No question about the legitimacy of the whole.
No, no question. No, no question, no, the the state appeal board has already approved it, paid them their part of the claim.
And they're eighty-two points up five percent, so I guess, yeah, they're the majority.
Basically, we have no choice.
I.
We all would.
Yeah. (laughing). I I would say yes, you have no choice.
I didn't read the code section to answer that question.
I'll make a motion when we authorize this claim.
Okay, motion by Huzz, second by Garmin. Any discussion on the motion? Not, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Okay. Do I need to sign the child?
No, there was not a place to sign it, but I saw anyway.
Okay.
If you wanna sign the bottom of it, you sure can, but there's not a place to.
But we. Uh, okay, discussion decision review and set date and time for first reading of amended ordinance. One fourteen C regulating the operation of all terrain vehicles and off-road vehicles in Cassuth County, Iowa. Good morning, Kendall.
Morning.
Okay, so do we have a date and time in mind?
Yeah, um, May sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, May sixth.
Um, that'll give, um. The county attorney's office for Kendall, I'm not sure who's publishing it, time to get it published. And then the forty-ten days before the first hearing.
Sure. Okay, that work for you?
That's fine, if you have any questions.
Can can I ask one question, this is mainly just clarifying of the, and I did talk to you, but, um, I just had questions whether or not. You know, this will allow people that like to just drive their all-terrain vehicle in parks and park and then go for a walk. This will allow some of that now?
Yep, that's that's exactly what it does, it allows them to now go into the parks, whereas before they did not.
Okay, thank you.
And and I also had a question, I hope I answered it correctly, but they asked what the change was, and the only thing that I could say is the word park was removed from it prohibiting.
That is correct, all the other areas, it still would be unlawful, but the parks.
So parks are now allowed?
Yep, and one thing that was brought to my attention, um, under section five and requirements, number four. If the operator was born after nineteen ninety-five, proof of passing Iowa DNR approved ATV education course is required. I was informed that the state says if you're under, it says you have to be eighteen or the DNR ATV certification is required from twelve to seventeen. So, I don't know if that's something while we're updating this, we should maybe adjust that to correlate with the state's requirements. I don't know how often that type of certification is checked for anyone above eighteen, I guess, I don't know if Roger would have any insight on that, but.
It is confusing. The way our orders is written compared to the state requirement, but basically what I tell people is if you're under the age of eighteen. You have to have that proof course to operate. But you have to be eighteen to operate on public roadways, unless you're doing farming, then you don't have to be sixteen. So there's a lot of confusing statewide about the ATV ordinances and differences in state laws, but, um, you're right, the way that's worded in here, it's a little bit confusing.
Well, and that's where. I guess, say for myself, if I'm born after nineteen ninety-five, I'm over eighteen, but so by state requirements, I don't need that course. By county requirements, I would, and, yeah, I think the confusion that that leads to members of the public or even to enforcement. Is a question mark, and not that it'd be a huge change, but I think that might be something we should look at while we're going through the process anyway.
Is anyone right now in nineteen to twenty-nine? Falls in that category, I mean, two of us appear fall in that category, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've I've had that question, because you get somebody that's born in two thousand, they're twenty-five years old, according to this, they'd have to have that course.
Yeah.
But under state law, they don't. Um, it's it's, you're right, section four, they're under, or excuse me, section five requirements, line four is a little confusing. If you think of a better way to word that, or?
Well, I think, I think it's just adding that. If they're under eighteen, that that would apply, and that would correlate with the state.
Right, between age from sixteen and eighteen.
Yeah, between, well, I was totally even, I don't, I don't know what the bottom age is of when you can do that or have it qualified, but. I I just add, if the operator is born after ninety-five and below eighteen years of age, then they have to have that ATV course.
Well, I don't know if you think nineteen ninety-five, is it they've been born after nineteen ninety-five, or?
But that's when it was changed, so.
I'll say, I would just be eliminate the nineteen ninety-five, make it less confusing, just say, under the age of eighteen, they need proof of passing the.
Yeah, yeah, that would probably be simpler.
I think you should talk to Todd and get his opinion on that, how you change it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just talking about correlating it with state law better.
Yeah, that is confusing, however, because I I get that across a lot.
I don't, I mean, and I don't think that needs to derail our conversation about setting a date and time today, I think we'll still do that, but I think that'd be something else.
Or when we do read it.
Incorporate it, I would incorporate it in the changes, that way.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, it's all handled with the same publication expenses.
Yeah, because I don't think it'll take him long to make that change, Kendall, do you, or Todd?
You're just at section sixteen, correct?
Section, section five, number four.
Okay.
And this for. This would be for one fourteen C, section five.
Yep. Oh, I see where you're looking at.
They're talking about the age up there.
Unless the operator is at least eighteen years of age, has a valid driver's license, the vehicle is duly registered, and the operator has proof of insurance, however, if the operator, operation. Is between sunrise sunset, is incidental to the vehicle's use for agricultural purposes, as set forth in Iowa code section. Uh, three twenty-one, point two, three, four, page of section one, paragraph eight, the operator must be at least sixteen years of age. So that kinda, that right there is the state recommendation. But then, section five, it says it right there again, that. A person's shot operating all terrain.
I I guess, just from a board perspective, does anyone have any concerns with aligning that with state requirements for the DNR ATV education course? I mean, because maybe that's something Roger can open work with Todd on to get that adjusted before publication. I don't, I don't think it would take much to change.
Yeah.
All right, we can, if there's a word for Roger, he could just, he was five, get the word changed on section five, number four.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Yeah.
Kendall, uh, for right now, the sign like Snip Lake says, no, no ATVs, no UGPVs.
That's correct.
Can you enforce that yourself, you guys enforce that yourself?
We do.
Okay, so now it's gonna be allowed?
We we do, we do it to this extent, Howard, um, we we usually just let the individuals know that it's not allowed. Um, and I, ninety percent of them say, oh, I didn't realize that, and they leave. If they did not leave, the enforcement would be calling the sheriff, because none of us are law enforcement certified.
But, I'll bet you, you, I, I, so now, th- this is gonna, it's not gonna give them free rein in the park just on the roadways?
No, the the way our other rules say all vehicles are designated to the roadways or parking lots. So it's, they're still gonna have to to follow that, or they'd be in violation.
Turn to Roger now, I I may read this wrong, I mean, I, but there's there's language in here about how headlands lift, there's language in here about thirty-five miles an hour, and. I do not wanna go faster than thirty-five, but people are proud of the fact that there's those fifty-five miles an hour, and so we're not, I'm assuming we're not enforcing that, or is that state law or county law? Or what is that? It's involved, um. Do we enforce it? It's, yeah, we we could, officer, uh. Let me rephrase. Clocks only going forty mile an hour, they can cite them under ordinance, under the county ordinance or the state. Right now, the big confusion in the state is whether or not they are required to have this triangle sign on the back. Apparently, uh, state patrol wrote a bunch of citations down in Framber County, and I'm waiting to hear a clarification yet from the state patrol on what code section to use. Because in our ordinance, it says you can either have the triangle, slow vehicle, or the reflective tape. Um, whereas the state's saying, no, you have to have a triangle, so there's a lot of confusion right now in the state on that.
And you're just, you're not interrupting a politician?
Nope, that's why.
Is there, is is a slow vehicle thing supposed to pop pop out at twenty-five, is their language, it says?
Thirty-five, for implements of husbandry. Section three eighty-three allows, if an implement of husbandry is exceeding thirty-five mile an hour, it's a simple misdemeanor. That would be like a tractor, I don't know how fast tractors is allowed. Fast one, I have drones, maybe eighteen mile an hour.
I have one of them.
Well, they're up to thirty. The other night, I think, I went on those thirty, and he had to be going, you know, or he'd go on a pretty good clip.
Yeah.
Yeah. So they they try to limit the implements of husbandry at that thirty-five mile an hour speed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, well, uh. You wanna, or need a motion to set the time and date for May sixth at what time?
Whatever time you want, but just so you know, if we set it for May sixth, it has to be the, to the paper by Friday in order to be. It has to be to the sway city and Bancroft paper by Friday in order to get published, May first.
Can we do the thirteenth for a week of pushing in there? I mean, I don't know if there's really.
It's completely up to Ken- Kendall, it's completely up to you what date you wanna do it.
I guess, I'd like to keep it moving on, I I can't imagine Roger and Todd and myself can't get together the next day or two, looking at changing one item on it.
Right.
It would be that difficult to, then we just have to send it to them to get it published.
Then will it be consecutive, like the sixth, and then the thirteenth, and then the twentieth is final?
Yep.
Yeah.
At the thirteenth, can we waive the final?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it could be, okay.
Yeah.
We just didn't, this morning, because we changed language after the first reading.
And for the animal ordinance, we had talked in the beginning.
So Tammy, to be clear, the three papers, two consecutive weeks, correct?
Just one week.
Oh, three papers, just one week?
Yeah, I just have to, I I double check with, um, Doug on that, because he does most of the publications with ordinances, but I believe it's just one.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, is there a motion left to set the time and date for May sixth that, you wanna make it early, like eight thirty?
Eight thirty.
Okay, motion by Garmin for that, second by Huzz. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous.
And Kendall, Todd will probably send you a summary to publish, he, we usually don't publish the whole ordinance, he usually, Todd usually composes a summary, and that's what gets published.
Okay. And then next, we've had discussion, decision, review and set date and time for first reading of amended ordinance five twelve dash A. Establishing rules and regulations for the protection, regulation and control of all parks, preserves, parkways, playgrounds, recreation centers and other property of Cassuth County. And was there a?
Basically same.
The same, yeah, same, same date, and put that at eight thirty-five?
I don't know.
Okay, motion by Stecker. Second by Garmin. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Okay. Thanks, Kendall, Roger.
So maybe tomorrow morning.
Uh, discussion decision approval of twenty twenty-five applications for natural conservation.
This is from Brandon in the assessor's office, um, and he did have me give you a list, um, there, yes. And then, Carter, he did ask if you approve him, if you would stop by after the meeting and sign the application.
Okay. Very good. Okay, we'll need a motion to approve those. I'll make the motion.
Motion by Wachter. I'll second it.
Discussion?
What's the school leaving property that, what is the second?
I was gonna ask to Brandon come in and, yeah, I mean, explain it to us.
I think that's a good idea, I think of.
Actually, uh, oh, yeah, yeah, go, go get Brandon, but I. I had a que- I just had a question on this from a constituent too, so this would be.
Yeah.
Be good.
What do you think it is?
Yeah, it is a, yeah, it's. It's a, it's a tax. Credit, yeah, for wetland and. Natural restoration, conservation areas.
And those areas like can't be farmed and things like that.
Correct, yeah.
Have a harvested or re- or re- or re- or what qualifies and doesn't.
What's your date of publication?
Um, May sixth.
Sixth, okay, thanks.
He is coming. Did you have a question, did you have a question from the constituent or the?
No.
Okay.
You're off the hook this time.
Okay, good, thanks. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Good morning, Brandon.
Good morning.
We're, we've got the list of the natural conservation in front of us, and and just the question was, what does this entail, or what's it for?
Um, so a slough bill is something that the county has approved, so the, the, uh. NRCS office takes the applications and they they look it all over, but it exempts the property that's in the forest area, so they have to have a minimum of so many trees per acre. Qualified, rivers and streams, um, and then the open prairie, so it's the three, yeah.
Exempts them from.
They don't pay taxes on it right now.
They don't pay any taxes on it? I don't.
I don't, I I'm just the, that area, so, uh, we don't, we don't typically see a whole, um, a forty-acre track in a program. Uh, there there are a few, but not, not very many.
Doesn't doesn't preclude them from selling it or anything?
Um, they could, then the new owner would be, uh, uh, would have to sign up for that, and and we've seen some owners that have bought some ground that. Hey, we wanna take it out, because we wanna, you know, clean it up and cut down the trees, and and we have removed some, so they they always get looked at by the, by that office, so.
And what qualifies you is if the land is not farmable, or or just, like, say, I'll just take my property for example, I've got. Five-ish acres of. Low bottom ground, can't be farmed, it's in a flood plain, is that a qualified track? Or or what what qualifies a person for that?
Yeah, so like the forest, you, like I said, you have to have like two, two hundred trees per acre or whatever it is.
You have to have trees on it?
Um, for just that program, the open prairie, the open prairie, that never can ever be farmed, and it had to been, um, you know, shown that it's never been tilled before.
Yeah.
And then the rivers and streams, I'm not too familiar with that one, but that that, like you said, is currently that, you know, typically that flood, flood area, so.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I was just curious, yeah, and they do have to apply for this.
Yeah, every year, yeah, and that, like I said, it, I'm, I always get them mixed up, I can't remember if it's the FSA office or the NRCS, but. They they are the ones that, you know, they they take care of all the applications.
Sure.
And they bring, they bring them to our office, then we also review them, and then obviously the board approves them and signs them, so.
Yeah, appreciated.
Yeah, and there are counties that decided not to re-sign the slough bill and go away from that, you know, um, you know.
Tax those properties?
Yeah, I I think it's basically the, the, you know, it's suburban tier counties that have a lot, you know, forest, and they don't have the, maybe the necessary dollars.
Yeah.
So.
They don't have to, no, they're not paying taxes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 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 so.
Very good.
Yes, you're welcome, yeah, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Brandon.
Have a good day.
Yeah, you too.
Okay, everyone understands that, we've got a motion and a second. Further discussion? If not, all in favor of approving the applications for twenty twenty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Okay.
Yeah, take a five-minute break, yeah, we'll call it, I'll go. I need to look at, it's number, it's number.
I'll be the break after break.
And then there's a budget certification too, that I need to resign.
Hey Doug, it's Joshua here in Corver.
Hey Doug, it's Joshua here in Corver. We are, we're gonna take a five minute break and then we'll be up to right away. Alright, thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yep. Molly's had enough for today.
Oh, no.
Oh. Oh, okay.
I never really know what secondary road is gonna have, so I never really.
So then, like, a guy called me and he's got some wetland and wanted taxes taken out or whatever, cuz it's not. It's just, it's there is. Unfarmed stuff, so I sent him to NRCS.
NRCS or even assessor's office and they can direct them.
Sure.
But yeah, tell them to visit those two places, NRCS, FSA, and assessor.
Yeah.
Between, between those places, they, they can tell them what applies and what doesn't.
Sure.
You heard how much rain we got?
Last night?
Yeah. Or did you not get any?
I didn't hardly get any.
Oh, we got a bunch, like.
Really?
Two o'clock in the morning, got woke up by it, it was coming down.
Just last night?
Yeah.
My pavement was, my pavement was dry.
Oh, or we have standing water in a couple spots, just lightly, not any big ponds.
I had a.
There's standing water.
I had a half inch, day and a half ago or whenever that was.
Yeah.
And then I had, then I had seven tenths the, two days before that.
Yeah. I felt a little bad, I was carrying some mud in today, but it was just from this morning, couldn't, couldn't avoid it getting in the truck.
Huh. No, it didn't, I don't, actually, when I got in my van, there was a couple little drops on the windshield that were just sitting there, but no, the pavement wasn't even wet.
Oh, no, we, we have a few places where water is likely standing.
From this morning?
This morning, but.
Really, this morning? Did it rain here long? Yeah, it rained. It did? Probably not that hard, but.
No, I got woke up by it and I, I've rarely ever been woke up by a storm.
Oh. Oh, actually, storm? Yeah, there was chances of thunderstorms I knew last night, but we didn't get them.
It must've, it must've been isolated or just far enough.
Yeah. Well, cuz we got, we got some wind gusts, I know that cuz I had the window open and it was laying there, all of a sudden I hear the wind just pick up and blow right in our window, I'm just like, whoa, that got cold quick.
That really got me too, but yeah, it was, it was wet.
And it rained, I didn't see lightning or really hear fire, so it must've been up there.
I guess I wasn't conscious enough to pay attention to lightning, but it was raining hard. It almost sounded like hail actually, but.
The storm.
I don't know if it was actually hail, but it sounded hard.
Last weekend or whenever we had that inch or seven tenths. Couple rain due, it's, it hailed twice at our house. Yeah, we got hail and we got on that.
It might've just been winddrops coming down that hard, but I, I know I heard it.
Because we have that, when they took the brick off, our bottom brick is out, so there's a metal piece that sticks out and goes down. And so all the way around the house and it just gets, and it hails, oh, it's loud. Okay.
Farmers out, um.
Where we have.
Your area, they'd, uh, they lost some chickens because of the hail.
Hmm.
Oh, chickens.
Yeah. I lost one chicken this morning.
You did?
Yeah, out of the two hundred there.
Oh, one of the baby chick?
One of them died, yeah. It was, it was smaller than the rest of them, a different color than I think, I don't know. The run to the litter.
Poor little guy, what are you gonna do with two hundred chicken?
Eat them. Well, I'm a.
Chicken nuggets?
Chicken nuggets.
Okay, that was fast answer.
You can roast them, you can fry them, you can boil them.
In about, in about eight or nine weeks.
Crackpots work all right too.
In about eight or nine weeks, they'll be ready for the crackpot, so.
I'm not sure Wilder would like that answer much.
His eyes might be back again. Good morning, Doug.
Good morning.
Good morning, Doug. Thank you for helping with the pointer this morning.
Absolutely the problem.
Yeah, all of a sudden I seen a dog. Let's just not do it that, and I see Doug over there with the pointer.
That chair was kind of in the way, I had to, I had to make sure I missed it.
Well, he gave it to me so that I could use it and practicing trying to do that and read was not working.
Yeah. Multitasking, yeah. Go ahead with it right away, whenever you're set up and ready.
Sure, we got two requests. Just put this down here straight. Uh, the first request is from, uh, Servu Field Services. And this would be the bridge south, uh, on the Orton Road, going over the river. They, there is a gas line connected to that bridge. And they are requesting to inspect, recode it. There is no excavation, they would just need to be on the bridge, reduce the traffic to one lane. They, they say they will be doing it. I would recommend that the board would go ahead and approve of this request.
Do you have any idea on timeframe, like is it a day project or a week or?
I think it's one of those that just depends, it says number of days of two.
I was just curious.
Okay. I was wondering this day and age, I don't know how long it's been, but I assume a long time, I'm wondering this day and age, why they don't just back up and bore underneath the river, you know, well, but anyway, that's not what they're asking to do, so.
Motion to approve the construction right away? Send the.
I'll second.
Motion by Waxter, second by Garmin. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous.
And the second request started out as a work order for the road department. A representative of the Shepherd Smith LLC, um, a couple of weeks ago put in a work order to clean a portion of the ditch of two hundred thirty street. There's just some area where silt has come out of their field over the last thirty years. And there is a little bit of some wet spots there and they just like things to drain a little bit better. After that work order was completed, a local contractor contacted me and said he was approached by the Shepherd Smith. Uh, they wanted to clean out the ditch and then use the material that they clean out to try to do, uh, some control of that erosion in their field by putting the material back up on the field and then adding some rock uh, to kind of a jetty type, uh, rock structure to let down. I thought it was a good idea, I wrote up a, an agreement to allow that, we have plans, this road was graded in nineteen ninety-five. We have plans, it is right near the culvert that is underneath there. They're not be excavated any lower than the culvert. They will be putting the material back on their own property, any effect would be their own property. So I, I would recommend that the board would do this and please, I know people are gonna, um, they may say that, well, if it's alright for somebody else to excavate a road ditch, why can't I? Well, first of all, there is permission, it, it's a very, very small area, two hundred feet, um, at the most. And we have plans on that road, we know it's restoring the road back to its original condition, not anything new, so. I, if anybody has a concern about this, I understand, but this is something kind of new for, for me and the road department.
Is this in our packet at all?
Yes, isn't it, uh, Shepherd?
It's not attached to that other one.
The only one we have is Servu. That's why I was trying to listen as you were talking, but I haven't seen it.
Here is a drawing of it.
Where is this at?
By Lard.
Mile north of Highway eighteen, right?
Just west of the Lard.
Yep, one sixty-nine, half a mile or so, there's a culvert in there, I apologize, I thought I put that in.
So they're doing the work or you're doing the work?
They would be paying a contractor to do the work.
Did you do any work there?
We did not, so the work was taken care of.
Okay, can I see this?
Sure, yeah.
Do you want me to make some copies quick?
That's okay.
Okay. Okay.
I don't need to stare at it too long.
Yeah, I do have some photos in a, some, like, it's pretty clear over the thirty years how that has silted into the road ditch. It's not.
Tammy, did you wanna see?
No, I don't think so.
There's the motion. Is there a motion to approve, is that working right away? Yes. Motion by Haas. Second by Garmin. Any other discussion on that? Yeah, are we gonna have someone, uh, from the secondary roads present to kinda monitor that work?
I met with the contractor, I, we will make sure that he doesn't do any more. I don't know if we're gonna be out there the whole time they're doing it, but he'll let us know, that's part of the agreement, uh, forty-eight hours. Either the Shepherd family or the contractor will be letting us know, so we, we are aware of what's going on.
Alright, uh, all in favor of approving the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Is it all for right away then?
That is, I'll give you, so you sign here, Carter.
Okay.
Doug, you wanna talk about the title of Minnesota in right away or general discussion?
Yeah, we, I got it as a point.
Okay.
So. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, that's all right away. Uh, the Department of Transportation did approve the budget and program, so next week I'll present that to the board for the, for your approval. Right after our meeting last week, uh, we received notification, our pavement contractor, Matthew, construction out of Onalaska, Wisconsin, they came in and they just took some millings off of the three resurfacing projects. Those projects have milling on them, they are going to take those back to the plant and incorporate them as recycled material. So they brought them that, those samples to the lab, so if anybody would ask you, it's just part of the procedure for the resurfacing on those projects. Kyle alluded to it, uh, he received an email from, is that the drainage clerk in whatever county that is, Fairbould? Uh, there was a utility contractor, Bevcom, working on the road that is shared between Minnesota, Fairbould County and Kasuth County. Uh, contractor was on the south side of the road and when they were installing the, uh, the fiber optic line, they hit the main, which is part of the, it's the west main of Drainage District one twenty-nine. Uh, I found out through some questioning, um, there was contact made with the Kasuth County Engineers Office. Um, however, the answer was, well, Minnesota maintains that road, they should repair it, and, which is the wrong answer. Kasuth County will be responsible to make sure that it gets repaired. However, it is the contractor's responsibility to pay for it. So I need to talk with the, uh, with the company, see how they wanna handle that, but it'll get repaired and it'll be paid for by the company, whether they use their own contractor or whether the road department does it and they reimburse us. But I have not, Doug Crouch has been sick, I, I need to get the permit, make sure that it's a standard permit and they'll have that. They're responsible for any damages. But we'll get to take care of it.
Sounds good, thank you.
Uh, our secondary road department is having this safety meeting Friday, this Friday, it starts at eight. If any board members would like to attend, you're more than welcome. At the nature center. FEMA, I think I've, all the costs have been submitted, it's a little bit over two hundred thirty thousand dollars. Uh, so now we're waiting for reimbursement, um, that should be starting now. We got opening position at the engineer's office and the mechanic, we're gonna start advertising forward. Then, uh, waste management, we have an annual meeting next Tuesday at seven o'clock here in the boardroom. We've got the financial assurance, which Elizabeth is coming to talk to the board. Is that scheduled, Tammy?
No, she's gonna be here either the end of this week or early next week for, to finish, to do the audit stuff, but she has not.
To finish her, they're not hoping.
She has not scheduled.
So as soon as that's finished, we will get that taken care of. And then we have scheduled, uh, cleanup day at the transfer station. In coordination with the City of Albona's cleanup day, that is the second Saturday of May this year. Usually it's the first, but we had some conflicts. So it's gonna be May tenth from eight o'clock till noon. It's really for recycling and household hazardous material, but it would give people the opportunity if they have any of that material that they'd like to, uh, dispose of correctly, the cleanup day will be May tenth. And then, um, I think we got a little bit of, I don't know, Tammy, if you talked with the solar ordinance? We have a call scheduled with.
Yeah, no, I haven't.
Mariah and.
Uh, Maria, Maria?
So anyway, we got that.
Monday, I think, yeah.
Kind of looking like next Monday, and then we have healthcare to talk about later on today.
What, what time next Monday is your call or?
I don't think we've said it up yet.
We're just trying to get.
Yeah, she just emailed us yesterday.
She wanted to talk to Tammy.
Cory, Doug and.
Cory and I.
Okay, I was gonna ask you, is that something you wanted me to be at?
It, it's completely up to you, but it sounded like this is just questions that she wanted to go. It's completely up to you, but it sounded like this is just questions that she wanted to go over with us first before she sets the time to answer your guys' questions, so.
It might be good if you're there.
If you wanna just let me know what time it is and if I can make it work, though.
Yeah, she said the morning doesn't work, but we haven't set a time yet.
Sounds good.
Doug, I was talking to the resident of West Titanica. That, past the road bridge is gonna be replaced.
Correct.
They brought, I told him, I, they brought a right crack.
Yes.
I told him, I know we talked about it. I said, I thought the rest of the bridges probably be closed. I thought you had to find an alternate route.
Maybe or may not be, but we already have an alternate route if it is closed.
His concern was the issue of the block dump in general.
And we do have that scheduled for maintenance shortly.
That's the whole, yeah, my guess. Yeah, I knew we talked about it.
You bet. There's a few people up in that area that are concerned about the conditioning of that road and a couple others around the county, so.
Okay. Any other questions, discussions for Doug? All right. We can move into drainage then. Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
Doug, while we're waiting for Marge, do you have the stuff for health insurance?
Yeah.
Are we able to get that in our electronic folder? Unless I need to read, unless I need to refresh, I guess.
I thought that was in there too.
Let me try going all the way out.
I don't think it's in there.
Oh, I see what he, he put it in the April twenty-ninth folder.
Oh.
Cause I see health insurance in there.
Sorry, I put it in the... Is that another one?
Oh, the Shepherd Smith is in there too. Yep.
Okay.
You're not completely crazy here, yeah.
Okay, I'm not completely telling the truth.
Sorry about that.
Mike has been working so hard with me on the budget presentation. I've been taking all of his time.
That was, I did some of that before I had my first cup of coffee. I just went to the latest one, cause most of the time...
Usually it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just went to the, I sort by date and I didn't really look at that. Dude, it's not Tammy. I'm gonna have to make sure.
Sorry, I think the only reason I did that is because I think I might have put something in there and I didn't wanna forget, so.
Well, I will move it after this meeting, but it is available electronically and next week.
Are you ready for drainage?
Yep.
Yep. All right. If we wanna go ahead for, to acknowledge the drainage transfers made by the county auditors office? Questions on that one?
Just tell me what, tell me, just tell me what it is again. I'm sorry.
So it's waivers that are collected on an improvement project. So somebody paid ahead on their waivers, so there was money in, so they transferred it to the original fund that the charges were on.
Thanks for doing that, Marge. And we'll let the record reflect that we acknowledged those. And then we have discussion decision to approve drainage repair requests. Go ahead. Amber, you got the first one?
Yep, it is drainage request number nineteen. It is the southwest of the northeast quarter of Section thirty-four, Brook Township. It's a broken tile washout that needs repair. And it's for Jesse Hasselmann. Sounds like a simple repair.
Okay, go ahead.
Eight, number eighteen is in Section eight of Lead Yard. Washout intake is flooded for Dwayne Loft. Then number twenty is Section thirteen of Springfield. Broken tile, washout, needs repair for David Goki. That's the two I have for this week. And then, once we get done with that, I'll talk about the request from Global Enterprises by Joe Goshi for discussion after that.
Okay. Need a motion to have the supervisors handle their requests. Some of, motion by Wacker, second by Haas. Discussion. Now, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, then you wanted to mention something, Kyle, for drainage discussion?
Yep. There's, Mike, if you want to see that. This is not specifically listed on the agenda today, so, and that's fine. We can just still discuss it. But I have had a couple conversations in regards to this repair request, and I believe we all received an email from Joe Goshi outlining, I'm gonna pull up the email, but outlining his comments in regards to this repair request and the discussion we had last week. I don't know if anyone has any direct questions to me or not, but I think it is blatant, abundantly clear that this is not a request for repair. This is a request for improvement, regardless of the size of and distance that's being requested. There's not a twenty or thirty foot restriction to bring it up to a one inch drainage coefficient. That's not how repairs are defined in the code of Iowa. And outside of this repair request in general, I guess my recommendation to the board is that every repair request from this individual or any companies associated with him should be sent to an engineer and attorney to oversee, because we continue to have legal challenges almost with every single situation that this individual involves. So to protect the district and the board acting as trustees, I guess I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. And I believe this one specifically needs to be sent to an engineer to evaluate, and we need to go through the process of public hearings for what has been requested.
Tyler, if you do that, does that mean increased expenses for the district?
It does.
As auditor, and I'm not comfortable with that. I understand that there's been issues in the past, but making other landowners in that district responsible for that, I don't think it's fair.
Well, it's not a question of fair when it comes down to our legal obligations. This is not a request for repair under the one inch drainage coefficient. That is, that is not...
And I understand this one, but I'm saying to say that, to have all other requests from him incur extra expenses, I'm not sure that that's, I'm personally, as auditor, not okay with that.
That's your opinion? And that's, I mean, that's not a motion to direct all future repairs that way, but I, I guess it's more maybe a note of caution to the board because of prior situations in history.
Yeah, the only thing that I see with that would be, I mean, I understand the history, but like if there's a simple tile washout, I, I think that would be an extra expense to send it on to an attorney or an engineer to look at that if it's a simple washout, something that we would treat any differently than any other one. This one obviously has some questions to it. And I believe we need to get, you know, answers to that before we do anything. Like a simple repair, I think we could maybe put ourselves in a little bit of a situation where we're treating people differently than others.
We have had simple repairs with this individual that have turned into legal issues because of situations that have happened out in the field. So like I said, not a, not a blanket motion or requirement, more of a word of caution. We've tried to accommodate this individual with having multiple supervisors in the field overseeing these repairs, and that has not proven successful to mitigate issues. So however that needs to be handled, maybe it's a case by case basis, but it was a general word of caution. So I guess with this one in particular, I would, I would suggest and recommend that we have it on the agenda next week to appoint an engineer and attorney for this. There are, I guess, in my opinion, obvious needs for both associated here.
So if you put it on the agenda, do they give those people within that district, that's enough notification for them to be aware of it? Or?
We could send out a postcard or something too, but I mean, we don't have a lot of... Or we could just schedule a public hearing, which also incurs expense, but whenever a improvement is requested, the code does dictate that that goes to an engineer for evaluation. And then they have to produce a report, obviously.
So in his email, it talks about fixing the outlet now. This is the way I wish to, fixing the outlet now for whatever fifty or sixty feet. So that if in the future we wanna do something, we'll be able to. In and of itself, it seems a little, it seems reasonable. That doesn't mean that everybody wants to shoulder the expense of that. I don't know. I don't know what's right. I have no idea.
Don't you need a petition from the district for an improvement?
Repair requests can be somewhat transitioned into improvement requests, depending on how they are. It's still a signed document from a landowner, so we have handled that both ways in the past. Typically, a petition form is what's used for improvement projects, but the matter of which paper it's on isn't the end.
How many, how many districts is it? How many people were involved in all that?
I think he said a couple thousand acres in his email, where he figured. Well, he said he looked at all the acreage schedules. I, I don't have a figure for that. Off the top of my head, I can pull up our maps, I suppose, but a sixty inch smooth wall pipe at two tenths grade, I can tell you without reading historical records or talking to any engineer that that is not a repair. So regardless of twenty or thirty feet that he outlines in his email or not, that's not a repair and it's not gonna change the water flow capacity of the district. If you have a, you, under the terms of repair, you can go up to the next conventional size that's readily available. That, I can tell you very easily, that is not the next conventional size that's readily available.
So it won't be a, it won't be a sixty inch, it won't be a nickel and dime project either?
No, it wouldn't.
So, I mean, I...
And, and also that would be assuming that his math is correct and...
Would I even legal?
Well, that's my point, is it's not, not just doing it under a repair request. It's not...
Oh, that's not my question. Is it even legal to do, period?
Hypothetically, putting a sixty inch tile in after going through the proper process, yes, could be done. We have a, we have a project with a similar sized outlet north of Sway City from an improvement project that we just did, but that was a couple million dollar improvement project that went through the proper steps to get accomplished.
Well, I, I'll admit, it doesn't sound like a repair to me either. It sounds like a improvement to make while you still can make the improvement and do the... I, it sounds like a, to me, I read it and I may have read it wrong, but I read it as I wanted, I'd like to have it do it now because I won't, may not be able to do it in the future, and I can understand that, but it's not just his decision.
It's not. And for improvements, the district has the right of remonstrance, which is objections filed by landowners owning seventy percent of the acres in the district and fifty percent by population. So any improvement projects, the rest of the owners in the district would have the right to stop it by remonstrance. And that's also one of the things that would be avoided by doing what he's requesting under a repair request. They wouldn't have that notification. They wouldn't have the right to remonstrance. And I can confidently say that that is not legal.
Is he gonna put it on the agenda for next week?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, I think that's, yeah, I think that's all I have for that one.
Anything else for Marge? Marge, anything else for us?
Tyler has a report he wants to present. Next week. So I'll put that on the agenda for next week.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Marge.
Thank you.
We can do a health insurance workshop here then.
Do you wanna do our whole discussion, all of your discussion before we get into health insurance? Just to get it done or not?
It's up to you.
Kind of if you'd like.
I was just asking.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so interim breakfast is May twenty-eighth from seven thirty to nine o'clock. I need to RSVP to them, so if you guys could let me know. I'm supposed to RSVP by May second, so if you could let me know this week or today, so I can let them know if they're gonna be attending.
I don't know. Is it seven thirty?
Um, it's seven thirty to nine.
I have to look and make sure. I don't have anything scheduled yet, but I will look.
Okay.
And go back to, if I don't, you email me.
Yes, I will. Okay.
Yep, you can address my, what am I?
Yeah. Columbia Event Center, Algonquin.
May twenty-eighth, they wanna know by May second?
Yeah.
Twenty-third?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. And I do have a speaker, Kyle Norris.
He was there a couple years ago.
Yeah. Titled Why Be Bold? Okay, so I'll wait to hear from you guys.
Okay.
Kyle, I'll cut. I have you down as yeses.
Sounds good.
You can cut me down as yes.
Okay. Next week.
Bail for you.
Next week I have a request from a Mark Fair, need for a culvert. Wellness Committee and Safety Committee minutes, update from General Assistance. We're gonna review and update Sections one point one to one point five. We're gonna review and update sections one point one to one point five of the handbook. And then on April twenty ninth at seven o'clock, you've been, been invited to attend the annual meeting of Sioux County Waste Management Association. So that will be on the agenda. We have a reclassification hearing for DD sixty sub four improvement at eight o'clock. We also have a third and final reading for the Animal Control Ordinance. So I'll probably have you guys do that quick before we do the reclassification hearing, if that's okay. Um, and then approving that um, final reading. And then yesterday I got an email and a call from um, lady at the Iowa DOT. They have been working on a condemnation hearing um, that's set for May fifteenth. And when they've been going through the list of commissioners, they found out that uh, three of the commissioners, um, two of them have moved out of the county that are real estate and one, I believe, is deceased. And so they need a few more people added to that list. So she has asked um, if we can make contact with, um, she gave me a list of real estate agents that are licensed. One person's licensed, had expired also. Um, of current um, licensed real estate agents to see if they are available for this hearing on May fifteenth. If they don't have any reason why they couldn't make an unbiased decision. Um, and then next week if you guys can approve um, those people on the commission list so that the judge can sign off on it. They don't want to have to reschedule the hearing, because that's already set for May fifteenth, so we need to get it done as soon as possible. So I am gonna try to call a couple of those people today. They need one person and one alternate um, to see if they are available and interested in doing that, and then I will put it on next week's agenda.
Can you send the list out to us?
Yeah. Um, yeah, I definitely will do that. And then um, I think that's it. I will be gone on vacation Friday. Otherwise, um, we'll get our budget sent finalized with the Department of Management today. That's all I have.
Okay. Howard?
I believe I will call anyone heavy, you can have developing.
Good, Amber?
Um, I went to the nine one one service board meeting um, for Josh last Tuesday.
Thank you again.
Oh, no, no problem, no problem at all. Um, we talked about um, just some things um, as far as the dispatch cost splits, legislation updates, which is everybody. Um, maybe talk some on the split on the rent of the building. Um, that was just kind of brought up as to what the split was and um, there was a couple comments that, you know, we, these boards approved it and then we changed it, but I, I said, well, they don't necessarily approve it until after the, the lease. But, you know, I wasn't a part of all of the discussions that happened prior to, but anyway, that was brought up. Um, the other thing, E. Derrick updated everybody about the um, textbooks being now part of that budget, being able to do some of that. Um, he said that meeting days are changed um, third Tuesday of January, April, July, and October. And uh, and there was basically just a little discussion and we were just about those things, nothing, nothing new, nothing. Just have everybody up to speed, basically. That's what it was. Okay, and then let's see. Um, emergency management meeting tonight, as long as we have a forum. Uh, the other thing I wanted to ask about, so more that I would community action organization. I have to find my email now again. Uh, they are, I, I don't know the process. They wanted it by April twenty fifth, of course, if this is something that needs to be on our agenda, I said it would be the twenty ninth. They're asking for a letter of support. Um, can I just read you the letter just so you understand? Um, while recent news stories have discussed the Trump administration's plans to eliminate the Head Start and L I H E A P programs, there are also questions surrounding funding for the Weatherization Assistance Program and Community Service Block Grant. Now, the press is reporting that the bulk of the recession, recession package will focus on the Public Broadcasting Service, uh, National Public Radio, UCED programs in smaller offices within the federal government. Early indications are that our core programs, especially Head Start, and I, L I H E A P are not included in the upcoming recession package. However, the possibility still exists that the administration may attempt to withhold fiscal year two thousand twenty five funding for some of our core programs. Um, while we do have strong bipartisan support for these programs, the Iowa Community Action Network believes demonstrating a wide swath of local support across Iowa will be impactful. Therefore, I am asking if North Iowa Community Action Organization Board members who are county supervisors are willing to sign onto the attached letter. This letter is specific for the uh, Community Services Block Grant. However, there may be another ask for Head Start and L I H E A P. If you're willing to sign on the letter, please let me know by April twenty fifth, at which time the letter will be circulated via docuSign. And um, again, it says we are requesting your signature as an A, an ICAO board member, but I do understand because this is specific to county supervisors, that you may need to bring this up as action item to your full county supervisors for board approval. Um, have we had situations like this before? I mean.
I was just searching in my email to see if I'd seen anything like that.
Yeah, so I didn't know, I mean, if.
They're wanting us to.
They're wanting us to.
Support a political position in that way or, or their organization in that way.
No, they're, they're, they're organization. They're not asking us to take any kind of a political stance, just um, uh, offer support for keeping those programs, I believe. So um, I do have a copy of the, the letter that they are, uh, it's a template. Uh, I could, I'm not gonna read that, you guys will get kind of listening to me, but um, they want it sent to Senator Grassley, um, Joni Ernst, Congressman, Phoebe Strah, Congresswoman, Miller Meeks, Congresswoman Ashley Henson, and Congressman Zatman. Um, they're just asking basically the first paragraph. We, the board supervisors from whatever county in Iowa who sit on the boards of sixteen community action agencies are writing to you today to ask for your assistance in ensuring that Congress continues its longstanding and welcome bipartisan support for the Community Services Block Grant. And then there's more, but that's the gist of the letter.
What is, what is the block, I, I know I was on Community Action, what does, what does the block grant go to? I can't remember.
Uh, you know what, me being a very newbie to that, I, I can't really answer that.
Okay, no, that's fine, that's fine.
Um.
Do you, do you think they could get us some examples of recipients in our, our projects that have been accomplished in our counties and increase mystery from that?
Um, I don't know. It says that Community Services Block Grant is one of the most accountable, performance-driven programs that Congress has helped create, continues to be one of the most valuable resources the state utilizes. It allows local CAAAs to leverage additional non-federal funding to maximize addressing poverty in our communities. Um, and they said that it's an essential program for our state. So, is that something that needs to be on the agenda? Is, is that, if, I mean, I would assume that if it's asking for the board's support, we all have to have that on our agenda. If it's asking, I mean, just as a, I'm a member of that board, do I support this sending the letter? I feel like I'm also representing all of you. So, that's where my question is, have we done this before, offered letters? I mean, I know we've offered letters of support for other things, just hasn't been anything like this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know to the extent of like federal funding conversations.
Yeah, I'm finding stuff for like Grandstand. We did a letter of support for the Grandstand project. But that's all I'm finding right now.
This morning, letter of support for, well, it was in letters.
That's a proclamation.
That's a proclamation, yeah.
So, uh.
We did for the, I think, we do for something to do with the pipeline?
I, I don't, I don't know if we'll find anything that.
Um, not supportive of the pipeline, but. Or maybe we received from the board of health.
Yeah, I can't remember.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I remember letters of support before, but I honestly don't remember what they were for.
Yeah.
This is state use of funds. And Community Services Block Grant, they're a whole list of where the funds go to. Okay.
I didn't send.
Number Des Moines, opportunity that's in our area.
Yeah. You know, and I can reach out to, to the other board supervisors as well and see what they are going to do. Um, you know, I could ask this part and um, and go hurt well.
Yeah.
And um, see what their take is on that and how they handle it.
She'll give you an opinion.
Oh, yes. Well, that's okay.
Yeah.
That's okay. I mean, opinions are good.
Sure.
So, anyway, um, I will, are you okay with it going on the agenda next week? After I get more information, I can forward that on to all of you.
Okay.
Um, but I think we should at least have it on our agenda.
Well, and if we do get to that point, if you think it's not something we need to act on or whatever, we can always either just move it from the agenda beginning of the meeting or skip over it.
Yeah, but for right now, um, I think at least if, if it's on, that's a good thing.
Sounds fine. Anything else, Amber?
Um, I don't think so.
Okay. Kyle?
Um, I have our CHABC meeting this Friday. One thing that was on our agenda last week was the um, Business and Community Forum on Thursday morning. I was planning to go to that and I had some stuff come up last month that I wasn't able to, but it was conveyed to me that um, since no one from the board was there, our attendance was missed. Um, so just wanted to share that with everyone. But otherwise, I don't think I had any other meetings. I think we've talked about everything else so far, so I think that's what I got.
Okay. Josh?
I did not have any meetings. All right. Uh, I had a board of health meeting last Wednesday and wasn't anything too earth shattering. Corey Peterson was there with the Iowa Private Wells Grant. I had to sign a paper for that. Um, Kendrick Open with Emergency Preparedness is doing presentation for the high schoolers at North Union. Um, North Iowa Community Action was at our meeting and they have a whole packet here of information on different services that they provide and um, some, yeah, that pretty much, services they provide to our county. Um, still filling the food boxes around the county and teaching people how to have conversations on mental health. Um, I think Sadie Becker is coming on Friday to the road department, um, safety meeting, I think.
Make it okay.
Or.
I'm not, I'm not sure her first name.
Yeah, I think C.C., but it could be Sadie, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
It is Sadie.
It is Sadie, okay. It's something, uh.
Yeah, okay, anyway, they mentioned that, so she'll be there presenting to the road departments and then, yeah, that was, that was about it for that. Um, I did have, we have a situation here. Mike Gears, and he had reached out to me a while back down culture, well, just west of Saint Joe or west of Jigs Station there on the E-road, there's a hog building mile and a half down the road or whatever. Um, it's on the south side. That's very clearly being a dam for, or they, they cut some tile apparently when they put it in and the neighbor to the north.
Is it a county tile or private tile?
No, but because he's wondering what the county can do because we approved the, um, we approved the hog building to go there and so they're not following their application. And so he's wondering what can be done. Um, so I need to get in touch with Iowa Slack, who owns the barn and just, I, I had, I had last year and then I thought they had touched base with each other and I never heard anything. I thought all was good and then apparently it's not, so. Um, uh, yeah, we need to pursue that again.
Did they say what specifically in the matrix they're not following?
Uh, I think just drainage is, is, because it's flooding out his field.
Okay.
And it, and it, you can see it cuts through and then it goes all the way down to his dad's i- in the next field south. Um, so that's.
And I, and I'm not saying it's not an issue, but my gut would tell me that that's a private matter. Um.
But he was thinking that there was something with them not abiding with the application for, for drainage.
That'd be something I'd probably ask Todd.
Okay. So, some, anyway, something I've got to look into. So, um, other than that, uh, I, I did get an email. Well, Kyle, you got an email first and forwarded to me on negotiations with.
Yep.
With the uh, Sheriff's Department and deputies. And they would like to set a date for negotiations at the earliest time possible, um, sometime after April twenty eighth. So.
It's like, well, a little late for this year.
Say that again?
Yeah, I can do this here.
Oh, I, I, I just got an email here from.
I just got it on over the weekend and I forwarded it to you and Carter on Monday, so, yeah. They would like to have a discussion.
What did you get?
Says the ballots, the ballots have been counted.
Oh, yeah, it's for the next fiscal year. The negotiations, I believe, are for, that they'll be for the next fiscal year.
For next year.
Not for, not for the July, not for twenty five, twenty six, but for.
That's a long ways early for next fiscal year.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
That's just what the email says.
Okay, they want to do that one?
At the earliest time possible. I have an open calendar after April twenty eighth.
Well, it is a little soon, so I mean, preferably fall.
Fall.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's when we've always done them.
Yeah.
Fall, maybe say, what's your schedule look like in September or November?
To, to some degree, to some degree, maybe it wouldn't hurt just to have a brief conversation with them to see what they're thinking or asking for, whatever, but.
We're not any further ahead than having that same conversation.
The, the other thing to do would be to forward that to Renee also, because she will be representing us in that.
Oh.
So I would forward that to Renee and see, get her advice on how to proceed with that, because she'll be handling that.
Okay.
It would be nice to be able to do negotiations at the same time.
Yeah.
Or close, and we're doing this on your road. I mean, honestly, it would be.
April twenty eighth makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice to stay, yeah, put that out a little bit.
Okay, well, that, that's all I have, so we can roll into health insurance finally here. Thanks for your patience, Doug, and we'll, yeah, so we can go ahead with that.
Uh, yeah, Donna and Tammy and I met last weekend, last week, just to kind of um, put some information together for the board. When you start talking about consumer-driven health plans. Um, and obviously, Michelle Moon from Wellmart knows um, more about this and has spoken with the board supervisors about this before. But last week, there was a lot of discussion about uh, what our, what our plans contain and what uh, a plan, a high deductible health plan would be. Um, so I took a file that Michelle Moon had emailed uh, to me and it was distributed to the board around January twenty four of two thousand twenty five. And in that comparison, there was the Al- the Alliance Select. And in that comparison, there was the, the Alliance Select Plan that we are using for fiscal year, uh, twenty sixth in Jan-, uh, June one of twenty twenty five and run through July of twenty twenty six. And I have a sheet that I handed out, the first page of it says planned comparison. So that, there's two pages, a front and a back. The front is the benefits that are received by the enrollment, the role, enrollees. So, uh, the Alliance Select, the left-hand column, that is what we are going to be offered as employees. And then there is a high deductible health plan, uh, based on the very same, uh, very same facts that underwriters use to get their statistics. And then this would be what is in there. So if you compare the two plans, the Alliance Select and the High Deductible Health Plan, the deductible in-network, uh, for current plan is one thousand dollars for a single person and two thousand dollars for a family. The High Deductible Health Plan has a single, uh, deductible of three thousand, three hundred dollars for a single and six thousand, six hundred dollars for a family. Uh, non-network are, is the same. Co-insurance, if you were in our current plan, a user would pay twenty percent for in-network and forty percent for non-network. Uh, health and the High Deductible Health Plan, it's zero percent. That would be part of that, uh, higher deductible that a person would have to play, pay using that, that plan. Uh, co-pay office visits are the same. There is zero dollars for the co-payment office visits. Emergency rooms are the same. Uh, co-pay ER deductible or co-insurance, uh, right now, it's, uh, the deductible is followed by the co-insurance. Outpatient co-payment is not applicable on either one. Uh, urgent care is not applicable on either one. Out-of-pocket maximum for our current plan, for a single person is fifteen hundred dollars. The out-of-pocket maximum for a family is three thousand. And then, uh, the High Deductible, the out-of-pocket maximum for a single person is three thousand, three hundred and for a family is six thousand, six hundred. And that's the same for non-network. Uh, infertility, our current plan, uh, there is a fifteen thousand dollar that would be covered underneath of our policy in the High Deductible Health Plan. Is that correct, Donna?
Yeah, a limit.
A limit of fifteen. In the health, High Deductible Health Plan, there is no, uh, coverage on the infertility. Infertility.
There's no limit?
There is no coverage.
There's no coverage on infertility at all?
Correct.
For the High Deductible?
For the High Deductible. Our current has up to fifteen thousand dollars will be covered.
That's my understanding. I agree.
Uh, pharmacy deductible, uh, fifty dollars for a single. And, uh, in the current, one hundred dollars for family. Uh, in the High Deductible Health Plan, that's part of the thirty-three hundred and the sixty-six hundred for single family. It's not an additional, but it's part of, uh, which is the prescription deductible aggregates with the health deductible. In the High Deductible, it does, it's, it's part of that whole deductible, uh, it's separated in our current plan.
So does that mean for a deductible, they, or not a deductible, for a prescription, they pay full price?
Yes, till they meet the, my understanding, till they meet the High Deductible Health Plan.
Okay.
Mind-boggling, isn't it?
Uh, there are tiers with our current plan of ten dollars for tier one, which are pretty much generic. Uh, tier two are twenty dollars, uh, co-pay and those are name brand prescriptions. And tier three are more specialty and those are not covered, there, there's no tier in the High Deductible Health Plan. Um, there is no co-insurance, uh, so the co-pay co-insurance, co-pay is for the Alliance Select, which we're, uh, will be enrolled in. Uh, the deductible would cover it in the High Deductible Health Plan. The out-of-pocket maximum, um, again, is the fifteen hundred and the three thousand for the family. And for the High Deductible, three thousand, three hundred and sixty-six hundred for the family. And does it aggregate with the health, health plan? Our current does not, our, in the High Deductible Health Plan, it would. And specialty drugs is just a repeat of that tier three, but forty-five dollars is a co-pay. Um, the deductible has to be met for the High Deductible Health Plan. So that is our benefits, what we are going to be having. Uh, when I say we, that is what employees will have beginning July one, the current plan. And this High Deductible Health Plan, for sake of discussion, is some, a health plan that was provided to the board supervisors. Uh, provided to us in January, it would be using the same underwriting, uh, percentage of statistics. If you look at the second page, uh, it talks about, uh, enrollment fees and estimated, uh, claims. So with both plans, we would have forty-three, uh, single plans and eighty-three family, which is as of January, um, that we had a hundred and twenty-six total contracts. Our initial fees, all the fees would be the very same for both plans. Um, our annual costs would, uh, which we have budgeted for, our estimated annual cost, if you go down, uh, underneath the estimated suggested rates, uh, there's a total for the year of two million, nine hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-four cents. That is what we are expecting, uh, what we have balanced. That's what we have budgeted for with our current plan. If you look at the High Deductible Healthcare, if all of our users were using the High Deductible Healthcare Plan, we would, uh, believe that our annual cost would be reduced, it would be a total of two million, five hundred two thousand, five hundred ninety dollars. Um, and then the estimated, uh, maximum liability to the fund using the Alliance Select is three million, four hundred sixty-three thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars and eight cents. And using the High Deductible Plan, the maximum estimated liability is two million, nine hundred twelve thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety cents. So that's just comparisons of the plan that we have and the High Deductible Plan. Then I tried to create just a cost comparison. And that is one sheet, uh, landscaped. Again, this is just going to be using more or less the same figures that are on the back of the planned comparison sheet. So the first part is just a repeat of what is on the back sheet. Uh, using the expected annual cost of our policy that we're using right now, using two million, nine hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-four cents. We are, expected revenue this year is going to be two million, eight hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. So if you go clear to the bottom of the Alliance Select sheet, right here, we are going to be ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars short of what our estimated cost will be using our estimated revenue. If you look at the right-hand side, then those four columns, uh, the Alliance Select and the High Deductible Health Plan. I, at the bottom, if you look at the single contracts, I put ten people enrolled in the High Deductible Health Plan, two singles, eight families. If you subtract the two singles from the forty-three singles that we have in our current plan and the eight family from the, from the eighty-three that we have, there'd be seventy-five family policies. And then I just multiplied what the monthly cost would be for each. And the fees that would go on each, uh, the Alliance Select portion would end up being two million, five hundred ninety-four thousand, seven hundred dollars, which is at the bottom of the page. The High Deductible Health Plan would be two hundred thirteen thousand dollars. Our, excuse me. I, let me re-say that. The expected cost, expected claims will be two million, six hundred eighty-five thousand, seventy-six dollars and eight cents for the Alliance Select. For the High Deductible, it would be two hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty cents. That would be our expected claims and the total to the right is two million, nine hundred four thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. If you, the next row, the single contribution for employees per month, the county contributes nine hundred seventy dollars, seventy-five dollars per month for a, a single. I put the nine hundred seventy-five dollars per month in for the High Deductible. The county, uh, contributes two thousand, one hundred dollars for the Alliance Select. I put that in for the family contribution for the High Deductible Health Plan. Employees contribute two hundred fifty dollars per month for the family. I took that out, my, my, from our discussion and from last week's, we kind of thought that the board was talking about not having a person, a family pay two hundred fifty dollars. And then also contributing one hundred dollars per month to an employee, uh, for, for the High Deductible. So that's whether they would be single or whether it would be a family. So using those figures, the estimated total revenue would be two million, five hundred ninety-four thousand, seven hundred dollars for the Alliance Select. And it'd be two hundred thirteen thousand dollars for the, uh, High Deductible. And if you add those together and add your expected claims together, the total column has everything there. We would be collecting two million, eight hundred seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. We would expect our claims to be two million, nine hundred four thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. And our estimated, uh, claims deducted from the total revenue would be ninety-seven thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars and forty-eight cents in the red compared to ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-four cents, uh, just using the Alliance Select.
It's not much of a difference.
That's only, you know, he's calculating on only a ten people switch. You know, who knows, it could be twenty people that switch and that number could look a little bit different, but.
Uh, absolutely.
I appreciate the time you put into this and stuff. I am a little confused though, because I think it, one, the expected claims and fees and the max liability and things and fees of the High Deductible Health Plan. Are you saying those are increases over what we would pay in claims for the Alliance Select? Is that where that number's coming from or where's that coming from?
I don't understand your question.
Well, the bottom portion of it, you got the expected claims and fees on the right side with the comparisons for the High Deductible Health Plan, two nineteen, seven, eight, eight, forty cents and two fifty-five.
Correct.
Are, you're saying those are more claims that we would pay in addition to the figures that are left?
Are you saying that's total claims for those ten people?
That's correct.
That's total claims for those.
It's the total expected claims for ten people.
Okay.
Ten policies.
Yes.
Okay.
Ten, ten policies would be the better way to say it.
Right, sorry, yes.
Okay.
For the eight family and two singles, yeah.
Yeah, that's an estimate using, using the same figures that were provided.
Okay. Then I think the next piece that I think makes it a little bit harder to compare is taking out the two fifty employee contribution and adding in a hundred a month. Employee con- or county contribution to an HSA. Although both of those in some form have been talked about, I think it, it makes it confusing to review the numbers and see the comparison with those already out of the equation. Because I guess I'd be looking for more of a side-by-side and then making changes from that. We can make as far as, um, policy decisions and we still want to see the end result, but I think looking at stuff side-by-side, at least initially, would be what I would think to look at.
And I think the reason you did that, Doug and Donna, tell me if I'm incorrect, but, um, is because in order to get people to go to a High Deductible Plan, you're gonna have to incentivize it. Because nobody's gonna want to do it unless you.
They'll pay you two hundred fifty dollars.
Right, yeah, right.
Right, but that was what we brought up too, was.
And, and, and they're gonna, you know, so I think that's, am I correct in saying that that's why we?
I think that was the direction, just to try and get a comparison, I mean, taking the two plans and initially looking at it. There may be different directions we're talking about going, but instead of.
Yeah.
I can see where the logic was at there. I think, I think what Kyle, or yeah.
This is, this is the fund. We're talking about the fund right here and I can certainly put, I mean, if you want to compare the two hundred fifty and take out the hundred, I can do that. You tell me what to do and I'll put it in there.
Yep, and, and I get that. My point is if, if you look at saving a dollar at the groceries, or you're, you're spending a dollar at the grocery store and you're gonna save thirty cents, you can make the decision whether you're gonna put fifteen cents back into something else or how you allocate that savings hypothetically. That's what I'm looking, or what I would like to look at, a side-by-side even comparison and then choose where we put the incentives from there.
So you would prefer to put two fifty here?
Two fifty here? Yeah, and then take out the hundred for the HSA contribution, because that would put them on a side-by-side comparison. So then that would be a difference of a hundred and thirty thousand roughly? Am I seeing that correct? You have ten people switch.
Were you coming up with a hundred and thirty thousand?
The ninety, ninety-three, seven, six is negative on the left and the twenty-nine, two, eleven, sixty cents on the left.
The estimated total revenue is, is the same for either one and the the ex- yeah, expected claims would be this two million, nine hundred four thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars, forty-eight cents. The estimated revenue would be two million, eight hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. And there would be, um, sixty, we, we would be, uh, sixty-one thousand. Uh, our revenue would be sixty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars, forty-eight cents less than what our expected claims are.
So what are, uh, column, row one, thirty-two, F, what is that? What's that formula tied to? What's that formula tied to?
That is, taking your expected claims and subtracting, it is the expected revenue subtracting the expected claims. Ex, estimated expected claims deducted from the total revenue.
Okay, so. Could we do, um, the same number of contracts for both of them side-by-side? As if all of our employees were on one and all of our employees were on the other? I don't know how you have your expected claims and fees filled in there. If it's a percentage or how that's correlated.
If you use, if, if all that is available is Health Deductible, is, is the High Deductible Health Plan, the estimated, right now, this estimated revenue is the very same. However, the expected claims would be two million five hundred thousand, five hundred, two thousand five hundred ninety dollars and sixty cents. So we would be three hundred forty-one thousand. We would be receiving thirty-four, three hundred forty-one thousand one hundred ninety dollars greater than what the expected claims are.
Can you have forty-three single contracts and eighty-three family contracts on both sides or will that make your calculus error?
Well, that's, this is forty, this one right here is forty-three, eighty-three, right there. This one's forty-three, eighty-three, so you just need to look at these numbers and then look at these numbers.
Okay. Total revenue would match you up. So that'd be a four hundred and forty.
If you look at the back, if you look at the back sheet of the comparison, that has the numbers right next to each other. There's nothing in each one.
Okay, yeah, that is a map on that, four forty-one, zero, zero, five, forty-four cents.
As far as. That's as, as far as the cost, that's really the only difference you have right now is the estimated claims and max liability to the fund.
So I guess to follow up on, the logic I was trying to get to would follow, if we, if we see a savings of four hundred and forty-one thousand, if everybody transitions, it gives, say you divided that by the single and family contracts, it would, you could figure out what cost savings that would be per contract. And to some degree, your calculations already kind of showed that, having two and eight, um, in the side-by-side comparison. But then after you see the side-by-side comparison, you could see how much of that cost savings do you, do we want to pass on? And then from there, which bucket do we put it into of whether reducing the premium paid or kind of contributing to an HSA or whatever. That's, I guess, for the sake of discussion, that's what I was trying to step through the process from beginning to end.
Basically, you have, you have choice or you incentivize. Or, or you can, you can do what, I mean, you might end up what you suggested or you might, you might do it differently, but I, I mean, I can see the merits of what you're asking. I mean, and, and, but there it is. The whole, obviously, well, I don't even know if it's obvious, but it's probably obvious. No, everybody's not gonna sign up for the plan the way it's, the way you, you have adjusted it now. Definitely, but if they did, uh, and that's what Kyle asked for. I'm not, if they did, you're saying that there's, there's about four forty-one? Well, I see more than that. I mean, I'm looking at four, sixty-three plus seventy-eight.
I would challenge you right now, if I, if anybody with a single contract, if they, if these two plans are offered to each one, each, why would a person?
Well, they wouldn't.
Why would a ten, person even take the High Deductible?
They wouldn't.
Well, the point of the conversation is whether it's a financial incentive in the form of money going to an HSA or less being paid in premium. The opposite of that is more being paid in premium, the other direction, so.
Well, I think that we have to look right now at the effects to the fund. That is, that we have to be employers.
And then that's the bottom.
Right.
That's what we have to.
That's the bottom line, yeah.
Right, is the effects to the fund.
And, and I agree with that, but that's where I'm saying, if you see that four forty-one as a difference or whatever, if there's a savings of four hundred and fifty thousand for round figures and we put incentives in place where if X number of people take it, this is how many, um.
But we don't have any incentives in there right now with showing the four hundred and fifty.
And, and you're not gonna know what that is until you know how many people that are interested in that.
There's no incentive right now for anybody to take the High Deductible Plan.
What we plug into an Excel sheet isn't what we offer at the end of the day.
But what you want to offer, I have a model that will show you what will happen. So, unless you want, unless you have a model. So. I, I did, I, this is, I put this together. I have a model. I believe this is what will happen to our fund. And if you have a different model, that's fine. I, I'll, I'll listen.
No, and I, I'd have to see how all the formulas are tied together to fully grasp everything in my head and confirm stuff. And I, I, I follow what you build, I think, in, in principle. But as a board decision, we can choose to adjust the premium, what the county contribution is, how much is contributed to HSA. All of those pieces are things that could be changed for each plan independently.
They could be, but I think the point of this, correct me if I'm wrong, was to, to compare what we have now. What, using this year's numbers.
Yep.
So that that's what's going to be presented to employees as a difference.
Mm-hmm.
So honestly, the, probably more of the time to have the discussion about the premium and all that is going to be next year when we have things. So right now, we're just basing this discussion on now.
But we wanted, we wanted to have open enrollment and we wanted to have a representative from Wellmark here to be able to present information on a High Deductible Plan.
Yep.
And we can speak in generalities. We can, we can say that this is an opportunity, but in order for anybody that is an employee to get their, make their decision, they're, they're going to want to know what kind of contribution, what kind of contribution to an HSA along with their own. As employers, something needs to be able to be said to the employee to give them an idea of what is, what is going on.
Okay, so could we have the discussion so that we actually, you know, get somewhere with this? Could we have the discussion of, number one, the employee contribution if they stay with Alliance Select? And number two, um, what their incentive will be if they go to the High Deductible Plan? I mean, it seems like those are the two things that we need to pretty much decide to put in this so that an employee actually knows what it looks like. Is, am I saying that correctly?
Well, I think that probably what needs to be done is something needs to be, I mean, the board doesn't have to make a decision today by any means. And I can certainly plug in numbers. But you take the information, look at it, study it, try to figure out what you think is fair. I can, I don't know what other, besides the employee contribution to the healthcare plan that they choose and the county contribution to an employer's HSA. I don't know if there's any other options available. The county's gonna, if we continue in the way that we have in the past, the county is gonna contribute to, uh, to the healthcare. And it's gonna go to the health fund. The health fund is gonna pay for the health bills. And it's something that I think doesn't have to be set in stone, but if we're, if the board is going to move towards the Ha- High Deductible Health Plan, you're gonna have to tell the employees, here is what the High Deductible Health Plan, what it's gonna cover, which is the front sheet of this. And here is what we're gonna offer as a current plan, which is the left column. And then, in addition, if you would take the High Deductible Health Plan, the county will do this. That will give Michelle an opportunity to speak and then she can even go one-on-one, which she has volunteered to do. Take appointments from employees if they have certain situations that they would like to, um, visit about and she can talk to them about it, both of those. But somehow, the, there's gotta be some way to be able to convey that information.
So this bottom line here in red is the, is the impact to your health fund?
Correct.
In, in each of these options, the way they're presented, this is the, this is the, whatever, what, and that fund balance is what now?
April one of twenty twenty-five, two million three hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred seven dollars and fifty-five cents.
And, and it, 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 based on this sheet, the way it's printed, not looking at the screen, we're only, we're only making two thousand dollars of progress. That comparing ninety-nine, basically comparing a hundred thousand dollar impact to the fund versus almost three thousand dollars back.
Correct.
If, if on these scenarios it was offered.
Correct, and, and that's the amount of people that.
And are offered.
Right, so, just, okay. Totally hypothetical, this is with the, taking the two fifty out and giving them a hundred dollars. I mean, that, that's, that's forty-two hundred dollars of incentive to, to do something. I, my thought process is, I mean, remember, we're all trying to get to the same place and I, I understand you're trying to, you're, you're trying to, uh, have something deliverable to them so they can, they can make a, th- this is what it would have been this year. We, we don't know what it's gonna be next year. And, and Kyle's trying to say, okay, you know, let's come up with different scenarios of what, and, and maybe that's not possible. Maybe there can't be six different hypotheticals, you know, to, to educate people with. Forty-two hundred dollars is one hell of an incentive to go to, to, to a High Deductible Health Plan. I think, I, I don't, I could be wrong, but I think there'd be a whole lot of people signing up for that. Why wouldn't you take that? Because.
Family.
That would only be for family. You wouldn't have the two fifty difference of premium for singles.
Fair point, fair point. Okay, all right, that, that's a fair point. I don't see. So that, so that a single only gets, only gets a.
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred. But even a family, why wouldn't, why wouldn't a family take the High Deductible Health Plan?
Because right now they are, they have some sort of a health issue that.
But still, they're only, they're, they're only, their maximum is sixty-six.
Yeah, your maximum amount of pocket is less than.
That's fine, I understand, I understand.
So I, I've said this before and it was, it would have been before this, well, maybe I've said it this year too, I don't know. But the way a loaner school's structured there is if everybody pays in the same. Regardless, they have three plan options. Everybody pays them the same. If they have a family plan, regardless of which option they take, everybody pays in the same. But then when you break it down, the difference is on the backside of how much they receive back into their HSA. So everybody's contribution in is the same, but then depending on which plan, they get the difference in premium back into their HSA. So if, if we save a hundred dollars in premium by someone choosing the High Deductible Plan, single, family, whatever, you would receive that money back in the form of a contribution to the HSA. So that would make, and to some degree with it being tied in here, I, I don't know how you'd structure it differently on the top of my head, but, um, I do know that's how they have their structure, is everybody pays in the same.
Do they do that themselves or do they have a consultant that, um, that does all their healthcare for them?
I, I don't think we need a consultant to manage.
Does the school use a consultant or do they do it all themselves?
They had someone from Wellmark originally. I think they did hire a consultant recently, but.
They, they, my understanding is yes, they do have a consultant.
But I don't think their structure started because of a consultant.
No, but they have a consultant right now.
That's, that's.
My understanding. That does all, that answers all questions for healthcare, talks to all their employees about healthcare, gives them, gives them models, gives them advice.
And we have someone from Wellmark that'll do it for free.
That's fine, yeah, but I, but they, they, uh, the Wellmark doesn't know what, what's going on with the fund. They know what's going on with health, health, healthcare plans.
Right, that, and that's, that's a decision we make here, but my point is they, for the employees, regardless of which plan they choose, the cost and contributions.
Yeah, but again, we, we're employers right now. We gotta remember that we're, we're our employers right now and we're looking at a fund. That's what we're looking at.
We're trying to protect that fund, basically, to keep it up.
My point is if you have an employee pay two hundred and fifty dollars for family premium and instead of a hundred dollars, they get three fifty back into an HSA, the total dollars is the same. The structure of how it's paid and who pays what is different, but the total at the end is the same.
Total would be the same as not having two hundred and fifty dollars going to the fund and.
But you're talking about the impact.
I mean, if you put two hundred and fifty dollars, transfer two hundred and fifty dollars into the fund and take it, two hundred and fifty dollars out of the fund, the effect of the fund is nothing.
Is nothing, and that's my point, how that's structured. We can look at the impact to the fund.
But if, if you want to contribute two hundred and fifty dollars, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a bet. If you want to go ahead and have the employee's family contribution, two hundred and fifty dollars, and then have the county contribute three hundred and fifty dollars towards an HSA, the round, the number at the bottom is gonna be the same as having zero dollars contributed to a fund and one hundred dollars contributed to an HSA. The bottom number is very same.
Yep, it is.
So if you got, if you want to offer, we can do it. So if you got, if you wanna offer, we can do it.
Apologize for the deviation, but if, if healthcare goes up again next year like it did this year, fifteen percent was the number that was thrown around a lot, correct?
Using the same plan, yes.
Okay. Do you think? Everybody in the room, do, do, do you think the county, is, everybody will, will, will continue to fund that to taxpayers, do, do you think they'll continue to fund that at, at the current plan? Something's gonna have to give eventually, isn't it, goes, I, I'm not, I, that's, that's an honest question, I'm not making a statement.
I, I think we're, we're, we're dealing on that. At a federal level, we're dealing with it at a state level, and we, we're dealing with it at a local level, and, yes, I, I don't, I do not disagree with you, uh. Healthcare. Is expensive.
Yeah, and so. So, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm asking questions, I, so if, if, if something's gonna change, what's gonna change? We, we have to be cognizant of the total cost. To the county and the cost of this fund. But there's two variables there, right?
The net effect of the fund, is the cost, cause then you gotta still have your revenue.
And these projections, these aren't yours, but they're theirs, the, the effective fund, I understand.
The cost.
That the last year was, was an anomaly. There was some high, there was some high costs, right?
We've had some last couple of years.
Have they been pretty close prior to that, have these projections been pretty close?
Actually.
We've done better.
I don't have, yes.
Yeah, that's fine, that's a good, I understand that, um. It, it'd be nice, and, and again, I'm just thinking out loud, I'm not making a statement, it'd be nice to put together something that would illustrate. What's gonna happen, or what could happen. And, and you don't want too many choices, and you don't wanna scare the pants off of anybody, but, you know, it, it's possible. You, you know, it's possible, it could look just like this, just like what's up, up here, right, you know, and, and, and just. And just, uh, this is. This is what we would offer, you know, and, and, and educate with that, but if they come in and, I, I'm, I'm still, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud, I'm not making statements, if, if. If it comes in at fifteen percent more. And, and, and. Employees are gonna wanna raise, which of course they are, you know, everybody wants a raise, I understand that, keep up with the world, uh. It sound like I'm, it sound like I'm stating a position, I'm not, I, I, I'd like to educate, I'd like to educate whether there's those variables you just don't know the answers to. And, and I understand what you're saying too, we gotta put something together that she can educate them with. And, uh, but it's not gonna be factual what's gonna happen twelve months from, and, just a side question, does, does the deductible have to be counted every year?
Those were questions, okay, so, we asked some additional questions, the one answer that I got back, that you had asked last week. Based on, do clients do either way, it's easier to have the plan year match the renewal, the renewal in perspective for members, however, it does get confusing. To members of their deductibles restart on July first, so it's really a client's preference, and she said basically our plan is set up. Probably the better fiscal year. In turn, we asked a, a series of questions, and, and I don't have an answer, but that was one of them.
They didn't, they didn't answer.
They didn't answer yet, yeah, and I, that was last.
I, and I, where I was going with that is, I understand the reluctance to switch plans in the middle of the year if the deductible starts over and everything, I, you know, that, that, that's a whole problem too. I understand that.
But we do have the option on the table where we could do a special open enrollment period. Late in the fall, early winter, where they could switch plans and have that change be effective January one. So, they could finish out the current half year or whatever and transition from there.
I, I would like to ask if that happened, how does that affect HR? I mean, as far as the having another one, like how much?
Would you kind of help me?
It depends, I mean, last July kind of was a crap shot, and, you know, there was a lot of switching and changing and.
Yeah.
I, um. I got your directive that's gonna be, but I think you're gonna have to make sure it aligns with everything else too, because it creates a lot of unknown, I mean, we've gotta prepare for that, and we have to know what we're doing, not come up at a half ahead of time. And I think that was one of the questions that we asked, if we change a plan to count every year, like when would we give the initial rates, when can you guys start doing your preparing, and we don't have that answer.
Well, and I think the big discussion is, um, you know. Why we're raising taxes, a lot of it, people say is because of the employee benefits, and, and, yeah, and a certain. Fund that was affected this year that we raised has the benefits in it, there's other things also, but I think what we're faced with is, um. You know, we kept it the same this year, but we wanted to educate that, you know, we kept it the same, but probably can't keep it the same for next year, meaning, and the only two ways to do that. My opinion, now, okay, do you. If people stick with the Alliance Select, you know, I know that what we're doing now, so I'm probably gonna be counterproductive, but anyway, hear me out. If we leave a status quo with the deductibles that we have now, with the plan that we're on now. The only two ways to change that, to make it more effective to keeping our fund balance okay without raising taxes, would be to either raise the deductible of that plan. Or ha, and raise the county, the county employee contribution to that. Am I thinking that correctly, but, I mean, and those are really our options that we're dealing with, so, are we. Are we spinning our wheels, offering the high deductible plan that may not even get signed up for? Which I'm fine with offering it, I get that, or putting it out there to see if people want it, but I think we're spinning our wheels.
Michelle did, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I think we're spinning our wheels, because I think people are used to this plan, and I think, I think employees would understand if faced with, hey guys, here's, here's what's happening. We got two choices, you know, to maintain our fund, which is protecting your health insurance, we either have to be a high deductible, or you have to pay more, or both. You know, both. To that current plan.
And if I remember right, a year or two ago, whenever we had those discussions with Michelle, and she was quoting us different. Or how changing the deductible with our current plan would affect it. That. That really wasn't a significant change.
It was not.
Just changing the deductible, if you're only changing the deductible, it really didn't make that much of a difference.
Well, was she, and this is a little bit off memory, but was she quoted this, um, winter, January, whatever. Believe changing the deductible to get us, um. Closer to the benchmark was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that difference, if I remember right.
Which isn't, in the scheme of things, that much.
I mean, it's.
A hundred and fifty thousand, but the next year, then health insurance is gonna go up another fifteen percent, there was a hundred and fifty thousand, that's just the nature of the game, but, but it's, yeah.
You know, there are, there are counties that do, uh, like, this isn't really what we're discussing, but, you know, the option is, you know. Would, would our employees rather see. Stable number every year that this is what you pay regardless, or a number that fluctuates, like say, okay, if our health insurance goes up fifteen percent, will you pay those up fifteen percent? You know, for me, I'd say a stable number is better, but there are counties that do that, you know, where they pay fifteen percent.
It's tied with the percentage.
It's tied with the percentage, and I heard anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five percent, that number can really skew. Your wages, I mean, that's, so. You know, we're faced with that as well, as keeping it stable, but maybe. I think. We're probably at the point where we may have to raise what is, what the employees are contributing to it.
Doug, let me, put in a number, just as a hypothetical, on this.
Sure.
Um. The employee contribution for the family, can we bump that to three hundred?
For our current plan?
For, on your right side there, we're right now, you have zero, yep, that one, pump that to three hundred. Get rid of the two fifty on the high deductible. Um, do county contribution of one fifty. And let's just say twenty people switch to that.
Family or single?
Let's do, uh, four in the single, sixteen in the family.
So if it's a third, uh, two thirds, why don't you do. Why don't you do third to two thirds, but. Seven fourteen.
Seven fourteen, and.
So, using that. For the. We would get a total. Expected claims of two million eight hundred sixty-nine thousand six hundred fifty-four. Expected revenue, two million eight hundred five thousand. The difference sixty-four, so. Thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty-five thousand dollars savings of the fund in all the amounts, and all, like all those hypotheticals.
Yeah, and all those hypotheticals.
And I, and I think that's the way we kinda need to go for incentivizing is, unfortunately, we may need to look at increasing the employee contribution, just to incentivize them going to. The high deductible, and then. Do a one fifty for county contribution into the HSA. I was just, never been, just throwing around.
I think that's a question that Michelle can answer is. Not necessarily. Contribution. But. What other. Plans. That would. Help out, there's, there's other things you can do with plan.
You mean discussing with the deductibles, instead of doing thirty-three and sixty-six, you could do.
No, I'm talking about the traditional, just, uh.
Oh.
The other deductibles.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, you can adjust the high deductible health plan to, but the other one is gonna be. You know, which option you want there as an employer.
Personal preference, I do, and this is how my plan is set up, it's not the, the pressure field, of course, but it's. It's tied to the, it's tied to inflation, basically, I mean, it's not to inflation, but, you know, it's a different amount every year. Based on.
A percentage.
A percentage or economy or whatever, and, and I, cause I think where. It ends up, whether it's every five years, or ten years, or twenty years, or fifty years, you, you know, the board gets to a point, every year is deciding, do we increase contribution, do we not? Whereas when you said it that it's gonna increase by so much based on these factors. It just happens, and so, the last couple of years, my health insurance. It's, it goes up nine dollars a month, and then it goes up eighteen dollars a month, and then it goes up ten dollars, or whatever it is, rather than. Okay, every year I plan the budget, it's gonna cost me two hundred dollars a month, and then suddenly. They come out and say, well, it's gonna be four hundred dollars a month, well, that's a lot bigger of a chunk, rather than if they'd have just done that. Ten dollars or extra, or whatever, and I'm just throwing numbers out there, a, a month over the course of time, that nobody really. It's no big deal, I, I shouldn't say it's no big deal, but it's. It's easy to swallow. And thinking, okay, I have to budget an extra ten dollars a month every year, rather than suddenly I gotta budget an extra two hundred dollars a month, I, I was just, just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
Kind of the zero to the two fifty, it was a big thing to it.
Correct.
It was a big thing.
Correct, and that's gonna, I mean, you're, the board, whether, like I say, whether it's next year or in twenty-five years, you're gonna be faced with that at, at some point again, and. You know, how, how do you wanna set this up so that it's? Smoother, I don't know.
Well, and to some degree, I mean. We'd all probably prefer our car insurance and house insurance and all that.
Oh, yeah.
A specific number, but they, they just send the bill and say, here you go.
Correct. Which is what Walmart does to us.
I do.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It is.
They don't ask.
But setting this is within our power. For the, it's within our power, and that's what we were.
Answers, no.
And I'm like, say, we don't, we don't have to make the decision today, and maybe we can take this one and digest it, but it's, it does need, we need to, need to know what we're presenting to employees.
Doug, would you be able to send your spreadsheet out to us? Cause I'd like to look at some of the formulas and wrap my head around some of that, and, yeah, like run scenarios and.
Donna, remind me again when to open enrollment?
Well, we talked about May twenty-ninth.
Okay.
For that.
So we're getting closer.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. If, if we had our own agenda next week, and had another conversation about it, I think it'd give us all some time to digest it and. Look through scenarios.
And, and I guess I'm, I'm talking a little bit different, we're talking about this, but for open enrollment, I think we're gonna have to be. Conscientious of the fact that we do the open enrollment as we are going with, and then if there's a presentation. It's a separate conversation, I mean, I hope you have it in the same time, cause otherwise you're gonna have just a fruit basket upset for questions. So, maybe we don't need to, which I know I hate to say, have another. Opportunity for employee education, but if we're not sure what we're presenting, I think it's gonna have a lot of confusion.
I, I would think we could have something by open enrollment, um, and.
I would say at least, at the very least, in, in education and presentation on, on. What the high deductible plan looks like, what they would be dealing with with the high deductible plan, and not necessarily the numbers that are gonna go along with it, because we don't, we won't know those numbers.
They're, they're gonna need the numbers, cause they've already been presented information on a high deductible, and they don't even wanna talk about high deductible plan anymore, until they know what incentives you're gonna give them.
What it is, they have to have an incentive to do it, and that has to be what is for them.
They don't wanna know.
We need a.
Then we're given a hypothetical, then when it changes, they go, well, you said you were gonna do this, and.
That's why you have to decide, you have to make a decision on what those incentives are, you can't just give them numbers, you have to make that decision.
The reality is, we.
And stick to it.
Yes.
Well. Within reason, ideally, yeah, but, um, until we get our actual figures back from Walmart next year, it's. It's not possible to make a hard decision set in stone.
Well, incentives you can.
So what, so when you get your numbers, what are you going to decide at that point, is that what you think you'll do, decide what the. Possible contribution of HSA is, or?
No, I, I think we could have a scenario of what could have been based on this year's numbers. Based on conversations, not necessarily today, but whether it's next week or whatever, prior to open enrollment, I think we could have that example to present to employees. And that's what we had talked about at the department head meeting, was having some sort of a example of what could have been with the current rates, but everyone's gotta understand that. Those aren't going to be the rates for next year.
Right.
It's going to change, whether it's fifteen percent or five percent or whatever. Those actual figures will adjust based on what we get back from Walmart.
Just for curiosity, could you put in, leave the three hundred dollars, but just as if everybody stayed with Alliance Select, what, what that would be? I can't read it very well, is that fifty?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it would be, with a three hundred dollar contribution, that'd be fifty, fifty dollars times eight, three. Times twelve.
Which is a forty-four, forty thousand dollars.
I'm guessing, I'm guessing you'd have another fifty a month to break even, probably. Based on the, uh, the two Alliance Select columns, the only thing different would be two fifty to three hundred. I don't wanna hijack your thought if you got another direction there, but if you plug in three fifty, you might, you might, could you plug in three fifty for family there, though?
No, I just wanted to see what it looked at.
So that, that would get you to basically breaking.
What is it, two hundred and ninety-five dollars?
Would be. Would be, you'd need to add a hundred bucks a month to employee contributions to make it break even based on projections.
Well, I mean, yeah. I guess if, I ju- I just like the idea of what, kinda what Carter said, you know, we gotta do it in some smaller increments if we're gonna do that. I mean, honestly, I.
There isn't time for small increments. You, you're not.
No, maybe like three hundred to three, instead of three fifty, three hundred.
The insurance is, the insurance is going up at a rate of, of. And, and I gotta be careful. I, you know, I've been, I've been shouting for about, I told this before, I've been shouting for about top to thirty years. This can't continue and it does continue. So I, I better off thirty years. I, I readily admit that, but it just, it just.
Well, then say the numbers you wanna present, because then that's what we gotta do, guys. We gotta just say what we wanna plug in here and show them. And that's what we gotta do.
Well.
And, and you know, basically I'm just saying my opinion, the three hundred dollar number, that's fine, but if the majority is the three fifty number, let's just say that's what we're putting in there. The incentive, I mean, so we're gonna incentivize, if we change that to three hundred and fifty, the, the high deductible pays nothing plus gets a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, that seems like a lot.
That seems like a lot. So if, I mean, that's, it seems like a lot.
But you're also dealing with two different things there because.
Yeah.
But, but you're, on the left side, you're adding dollars that are contributed to the fund um, in the form of family contribution. On the right side, you're, you should be looking at a lower premium, but you're adding an expense. So I, I think it's gonna be easier if we wrap, to wrap our heads around if we're looking at the same total dollars going in and then a benefit just going out once. I guess. Regardless of where it's at, I think we gotta look at it and say, okay, how much of a benefit can we afford to give? And then which piece of the pie does that equate to? And in some regards, there, yeah, there's probably a million scenarios that could be ran and I don't, I don't think we need to make a decision on that today. I think we should have a scenario before open enrollment so it can be presented as a possible scenario.
Why can't we, why can't we talk about this scenario now? I feel like next week all's we're gonna do is, is, is do this exact same thing. What scenario is everybody comfortable with?
I like my three hundred and one fifty HSA contribution.
I like the three hu- I mean, I like the three hundred better than the three fifty.
I, I don't think it's due in our due diligence to have this conversation being correlated back from January and then we didn't talk about it much until now and then we're gonna make a decision that we're gonna try and stick to next year all in one shot.
The point of our discussion at budget time was so that we would educate our employees. If we don't do that, then we are going against what we said. We knew going into this that we would have to come up with some kind of a scenario that we could present to them so they would understand the difference in the plans. We are never going to say this is exactly the way it's going to be. Never. We won't be able to do it at this time of the year and it's honestly even hard to do in January. We're never gonna be able to do that. We have to come up with something that these people can plug in and present because it does take a lot of time. Their time and effort is, is very valuable too. And every time we put this off and think of all these different scenarios, we're not getting anywhere.
One of the differences, we're comparing to our current plan versus the high deductible, where Michelle was showing our current plan, but comparing our current plan with higher deductibles and comparing that to a high deductible plan. So we're looking at it completely different than what we were looking at the last time we talked to her. There's a whole piece of the conversation that's not.
There are, there are many different plans that have been presented. I just went with the
I, I know, I know.
current plan and if you would like to choose one of those other ones, we can plug those numbers in.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not discrediting that at all. I'm not trying to, but I'm saying that is one of the pieces of the equation that we talked about before, but that's not just on the screen to plug numbers into.
I guess what's wrong with these two? What's wrong with these two is what we currently have and this is a high deductible plan. What's wrong with that? What's, what's wrong with this?
Uh, so if we're gonna change the deductibles next year for the Alliance Select, the one that we're on right now, you know, those, that number could change too based on what rates we get.
To some degree, yes, but also the incentives for switching to the high deductible plan, part of what she was talking about was having our base plan be closer and more comparable. So if you keep the base plan farther away from the high deductible plan, you almost have to do more incentivizing to make that switch logical. And just raising employee contribution or just talking about an HSA contribution is, in my opinion, maybe half the conversation.
So basically what you're saying is kind of, we're never gonna be able to educate the employees on anything. We're just gonna drop it in their lap. And I think that's what basically we will end up doing if we try and figure every scenario.
That's not at all what I'm saying.
And then they're not, then they're not gonna be able to make a decision because remember, you're basing this off of everybody being healthy. We have employees that are healthy, but will never ever be able to do a high deductible plan because of pharmacy bills, you know, medical bills that they have, that will never work for them. So you, you, you don't wanna use this as a punishment either, you know, where now all of a sudden they're gonna have to pay, you know, double the deductible they pay now in order to incentivize other people. That's not fair either.
And to keep the, you know, to keep the same deductible and have to pay a little bit more, okay, they might say, well, you know what? Our deductible's pretty low. That's gonna be doable and manageable for my family. You know, the other people may say, oh, well, this high deductible plan, you know, I like the thought of doing the health savings account and I think that's gonna work for us. You know, I think that, I think having these two things is fair. And I think that we need to decide, the employee contribution, what we're thinking we, we would change that to because that is giving forewarning. Granted, could it come back and bite us? I guess it could. It could also come back and be, maybe, maybe we were healthier this year. Crystal ball. High deductible, what's the incentive gonna be? You know, I think if we're gonna raise it three fifty over here and do, make it, there, there's zero and a hundred and fifty, it seems like an awful lot, but I guess that could be your incentive.
Well, part of that, again, going back to that's, that's really only addressing family plans. That's not, um, incentivizing single plans adjusting hardly at all. Uh, and we have a third of our contracts that are in that category.
But do you, so are you saying you want singles to pay part of the, the premium now?
No, I'm not.
Okay, what are you saying?
I'm saying, I, I guess I would echo what I said before. If the total contribution is the same for singles and family, um, regardless of which plan they choose, the, the return back to the employee in the form of money into an HSA should be proportionate to the difference in premium between the two plans.
So then you probably need, I don't know, and maybe this is too difficult, do you need a cost comparison for a single and a cost comparison for a family?
Probably.
Or would that be too difficult? You know, so that if we're gonna do something for a single, it's different. I mean, that's what you, the way you have to present it is, i- if you're single, this is what it would look like. If you have a family, this is what it would look like. Is that something that's a pain in the?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. No.
You know what's, so, okay, well, I mean.
I mean, it's adding another, another row there that it, uh, it would be an employee single contribution.
Okay. And that's how it's fair, then we would need that.
And then if they're. If they're, you know, we might have to put two, cause you got, uh, if you would have a HSA contribution for a single and an HSA contribution for a family.
I mean, if you, I honestly, if you want a single person to go to a high deductible plan, they almost have to, sorry if I'm missing something, but wouldn't they all, wouldn't they have to, have to contribute to the other in order for that to be an incentive?
Either contribute to the other in premium or, um, receive something on the HSA side. At the end of the day, the diff, the, the impact to the fund, the, what I presented, say, last year or what I would look at in concept right now, the impact to the fund would be the same because I do looking at total dollars of cost for a single plan on each option, total dollars of cost for family for each option. And then the difference in premium would basically return back to the employee to use in their discretion, so to speak. They would take control over the dollars allocated towards their healthcare. You have the choice to put it into premium or you have the choice to put it into your HSA for whatever that difference is. But it would be the same total cost to the fund, so that's, I guess that's the way I've looked at it, um, in general for quite a while. And that's where, to some degree, that's where I'd say having the employee contribution being different on one side versus the other makes it a little more confusing because you're not looking at the same net dollars coming in. To the fun side, yeah, if you have two hundred and fifty coming in and two hundred and fifty more going out, it's the exact same. That is correct. But I'd start at a place of net zero comparing between the plans and then the difference or that cost savings could be passed back on to the employee.
What does the board think about digesting it for a week and making a decision next, next Tuesday?
I don't think, I mean, I don't.
We've got a lot of different ideas thrown out.
And I don't think we, you, yeah, I don't think we've even come close to, I mean, we have to decide only a couple of things and we're not, we're not doing that. How's, how is digesting gonna be any different? I mean, honestly, we have two things to figure out. Two things.
Well, are we gonna keep the target that we have right now of a hundred thousand dollar projected loss or is our goal gonna be hitting net zero based on their expected numbers? Or where we at? That's obviously a part of this conversation.
Right.
And it bakes into the numbers, but that's not the couple pieces of the equation that we've been talking about.
Well, I mean, just for starters, can, can everybody say what they're comfortable with as far as a family, um, portion, what people would have to pay? Is it three hundred or three hundred and fifty? And that, and that's at least a, that's what we're gonna plug in there. I mean, that's one piece. Can we figure out one piece? Cause we're not gonna be able to know if none of this is gonna be perfect. I mean, if you wanted to end up okay, fairly okay, yeah, it would've been three hundred and fifty dollars a year this year. Are we comfortable raising it fifty dollars and saying, you know what, it, it could go up fifty dollars the following year? And I know we don't have to say that right now, but.
Well. The hard part is if we look at a total contribution of twenty three fifty for a family plan and have a fifteen percent increase on it next year, that's a three hundred and fifty dollar increase. So who is gonna absorb that? If the county contribution for both is staying the same, you might look at a three fifty this year to break even, adding three fifty to that next year, we'll put a seven hundred. And that's, that's just the math of it.
We're talking about next year. So, I mean, we're talking about what we wanna present. I mean, we're never gonna know, but we, we do have to come up with some kind of a thing for education and, and so. I mean, I, I don't know. I feel like we're just spinning our wheels and we got to decide just a couple of different things. I've put it out there and I think.
Well, yeah, cause we're.
Solve things a little bit quicker.
Cause reality is, we're, we're trying to, as employers, trying to make the fund work and if we continue what we're doing, that you just can't, so.
Well, yeah, right, exactly. And so, I'm looking at those numbers. And Carter, what would you be comfortable with as far as the family contribution? Next year? Leaving it the same, going to three hundred, going to three hundred and fifty? I mean, obviously, I'm gonna tell you, I know we can't leave it the same.
Right. You're gonna, I mean, you're gonna have to go to three fifty to start, I think. I just, if, if you're gonna wanna make the fund work, I, I just don't know, cause you're gonna take it to three hundred and then I don't know. I don't know what the answer is because it's gonna go up again and then we're gonna be back here again. And so it's, I mean, just looking at this year's numbers, yeah.
Yeah.
Three fifty is gonna.
Three, three fifty is what would've balanced this year.
Is gonna work.
Um, and if we do it, talk about an example of this year's numbers on what could've been, somehow total revenue would've had to hit that.
In some way, yeah. Um, and so.
I need that else?
Yeah.
Doug, what was our employee or our county contribution for family plans last year?
Boy, I don't know. I don't have that. Let's do it right now.
I didn't bring my book in here either.
I was, I was thinking it was just shy of nineteen hundred.
Eighteen seventy. I think eighteen seventy five is what we were, had plugged in.
I didn't bring my book with me.
You're right, Donna. Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, so fifteen percent increase on that would bring twenty one fifty six. So I mean, we're talking to make, to make the fund balance with three fifty employee contribution, that's also adding a two hundred and eighty dollar increase in tax dollars on the family side. So to hit that, to hit that number that we have, well, actually, two fifty, whatever it is. Um, but that increase that we had from last year's family plan to this year's family plan is also incorporated in that number. And I just thought of mentioning that, cause I don't think we've talked about that today.
So it was two thousand seventy five and eight forty five?
Twenty seventy five minus two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, right.
Is what?
Because our twenty three fifty is not including, like this year isn't including the employees, right?
Twenty one hundred.
Twenty one hundred. Well, I got twenty three fifty for that total, okay.
Twenty. Twenty three total, total. Two hundred and fifty dollars coming from, from the employee.
So it was eighteen twenty five county contribution last year?
Right.
Exactly, yeah.
That's a two.
And this year it's twenty one hundred?
Yeah, so.
Last year it was eighteen twenty five.
That's a two hundred and seventy five dollars. That's a two hundred and seventy-five dollar increase.
And two fifty, right? And this year it's gonna be twenty, what, twenty?
Twenty-one hundred.
With the two fifty.
Two fifty.
And the single last year was eight seventy.
Eight forty-five.
It was just there, right?
I think it was eight forty-five.
Yeah, I got some information. I checked out.
Eight forty-five.
Eight forty-five and uh.
So that's a.
Nine seventy-five for next fiscal year.
Eight forty-five, nine seventy-five.
That's a hundred and thirty dollar increase on per single. And. And a two seventy-five, if you can think of it.
What would, I mean, what would be wrong with single having to pay something? I mean, for the, for the fund, what would, what would be so wrong with that?
I guess my thought, I don't, I don't know if I've said it before or not, um, but my thought is the employees that are actually working for the county, I feel we should have as much, if not more, responsibility to cover their health costs than the cost of the family plans. Um, because the spouses, children, whatever that would be on a family plan are not directly providing the service to our constituents that we are charging constituents and landowners that are paying those taxes. So until, this is just my opinion, but until the dollar value of the single plan meets or exceeds what the family plan dollar value is, I would not support singles paying anything. Because the family plans are still receiving a greater financial benefit from tax dollars. That's my.
Can I, can I jump in?
Yeah.
I know you get sick of my stories, I'm sure, but uh, at the L, at, at Mac Shield, for example, they did what Amber's suggesting. Hear me out, don't go shut me off. Uh, yeah, uh, because, and I said, well, how do you justify that? You know, you're paying more for the family as an employer contribution than you are for the single in your str-. And the, and the answer to that question was, well, that's what the market will bear. It is a way to raise the money. I actually agree with Kyle. Amber, I'm, I'm not picking on you, but I hear a lot about what's fair. And I don't in any way see what's fair about paying in the case of, of this year's numbers. If we were to, if we were to raise it to three fifty, if we were using this year's numbers and raise it to three fifty and the county would be paying two thousand and the employee would be paying three fifty and then ask the single to pay a hundred and we'd, we'd only be paying seven forty-five. I don't see what's fair about that. I hear a lot about fair and I, I don't, I don't see a. I, 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 I agree with Kyle, I'm just not, not stake, put a stake in the ground saying I won't move it. But I agree with Kyle's logic on, on that as far as, I, I'd have a hard time justifying uh laying out two thousand per employee for a family plan, the county's contribution, and then laying out seven hundred and fifty for a, and asking the single to pay a hundred. I can be, I can compromise, I can work with everybody, but as far as what I see as logical, I, I, I would have a problem with that too.
Well, and with this year's numbers, tax dollars that would be contributed to healthcare costs for single would come to eleven thousand seven hundred. Family would come to twenty-five thousand two hundred. That seems a long way off to me. And I guess from my standpoint is being, sitting here being an employer, trying to balance the um responsibilities of being fair with tax dollars and the whole nine yards. Um, whether it's my wife, my kids, or someone else's, um, or lack thereof, that's not the same for someone that's doing the service. Whether I'm single or married on the board does not provide more service to the constituents that, and landowners that are paying the bill. So that's.
By the way, I mixed up numbers. The single's twenty-four, I get twenty-five. Sorry about that.
It's important.
I understand. I mixed up numbers there. There, and there are more. I know to, I know to get some progress, it's easy to say there's only two variables, but there, there's, there's a lot of variables. There's, there's raising deductibles to change it, and there's, there's contributions to HSA. You could, I know this is getting really deep in the woods, but there's the thought of, you know, you're better off taking less of a pay increase and having the county keep the insurance the same. You know, cause the insurance, you don't pay tax on that money. You know, if you had the choice of paying, maybe you don't pay tax on the money, but if it's going to the health plan either, I don't know. I didn't think about it.
Yeah, HSA is not taxed.
Well, I'm not talking about HSA, I just started with the premium.
That's not taxed either. If that comes, if that comes off through tax.
Yeah.
Anyway, so there's been a lot of variables.
Right, and there is a lot of variables, but the variables we gotta talk about now are these two. And for this year, because those are the only variables we've got. So those are the things we gotta figure out. If, you know what, if we're not gonna do that, then it's just this conversation.
I like three fifty is maybe the sentiment of the board for today.
I don't know, I haven't heard everybody say, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I wanna, I wanna say it's important, remember, this is talking about if, if, if we're gonna portray three fifty, remember, three fifty is not next year, three fifty is this year. And we're not doing it, I know. That's what would've been under this year's scenario. It's, it's not in any way indicative of what it's gonna be next year. But that's, we're trying to educate, that's all it is. And you, and you can, I'm not sure, I don't wanna say that. You can put this spreadsheet up and say, this is what would've been if so many people would've done it. And, and will they understand it? Would I understand? Hell, I'm not sure I understand it. I'm catching up, I'm eventually, I'm getting there now, uh, after whatever it's been, an hour and a half. Uh, yeah, you put three fifty in there and, and make the, and make the numbers come out to, you know, two hundred and ninety-five dollars, I think everybody can live with that if that's where it, it's more of a hit to the, hit to the fun. I don't, I, for educational purposes, I don't care if we come back next week or if we decide this week. I, I can see if, if everybody actually put time and effort into it. You know, maybe we could gain something by waiting a week, but if, if, if we're not gonna really put it, if it takes a collaboration of everybody in the room to, to move something, you know, maybe there's no benefit to coming back. I, I can, I can be swayed either way on that, but I, I, it, this is what would've happened this year.
I, I do.
If, sorry.
I, I do have one thought. Since we, since we kinda looked at the alliance select on the comparison side and kinda got that to what would break even, can we put all the, all the contracts on the high deductible side and then adjust the HSA until we basically hit even or break even? Because that would potentially give us a comparison, I mean, we don't have, uh, we can know in our head that we're basically at break even on the left side. So if we just flip the coin and look at the other side of the high deductible plan with everybody on there, what does our number?
When you say left side, you actually mean the middle column?
Well, yeah, the, yep, the middle column, yep, the left side of the comparison. Um, so then. No, not.
That's gonna go the wrong way.
Where is the difference in premium calculated for the high deductible plan? Because there is a significant difference in premium.
There's a estimated liability for single, estimated liability for family, per month, per family policy.
Yeah.
Per month, per single policy. For the whole month for all of the employees, forty-three eighty-three, and that's the annual then for the, for the, all the employees. If all of them were on the high deductible plan.
Well, I don't think that's kinda getting to where I was looking to go because.
Set the, set the county HSA to zero. Just to see where that gets us.
It, it's part of that, but that's only looking at claims and fees. And the, the actual like single and family, oh, up there, I think it's row ninety-eight maybe. Is that the difference in premium?
That's what I was just talking about, yeah.
Okay.
This is the single.
Slow, slow down for me.
Right here, this is the single per month anticipated. No, excuse me. This is the estimated, what, eight, eight hundred thirty-two, I was in the wrong.
I know.
Math.
That is bad.
That's a bad word later.
Family is two thousand eighty-one. So monthly cost for all employees is estimated at two hundred eight thousand compared to the two hundred forty-five for the. And annually, two hundred, two million five hundred thousand as opposed to two million nine hundred forty-three.
So, so yeah, that's based off suggested rates, but our actual premium cost would not be their suggested rates because we are a percentage lower than that. I, I wanna say one time I figured it out, we were like eighty-five percent of their suggested rates.
I think the last couple of years have brought that up.
Correct.
Somewhere, if you wanna just say ninety percent.
Yeah, maybe, yep. So our actual cost would be different than that.
Yeah, the, I mean, what they're suggesting is, it's not set in stone. There's been years where we have had some costs above what their projections are. The majority have been less than, the majority of the years have been less than. And I don't know right off the top of my head what that averages.
Can we go back down to where you're putting the numbers in for the employee contribution, or the county contribution? Um, can we set that to fifty bucks?
The county contribution to S H A or like?
HSA, yeah. Uh, let's try a hundred.
Try seventy.
You think seventy?
It's gonna be less than seventy.
Be closer to zero.
Yeah.
Which one would you like?
Try HSA at seventy.
Seventy, yeah.
So it's sixty, sixty-two, sixty-five, I'm gonna guess.
I mean, you, I can figure it out exactly.
Are you trying to break even?
Yeah, trying to break even.
Just trying to get as close as possible.
Yes, sixty would be close. But that's, but that's using suggested rates, not our premium cost. So in that, I guess that.
But we would still be contributing, the county would be contributing twenty-one hundred dollars per month.
Yep.
Yep.
For family and nine hundred seventy-five.
So with that, and that doesn't break down single or family difference, but it would be maybe a close comparison of, you could've paid three fifty a month for premium for our current plan or you could've had no premium and sixty dollars a month, so it'd be a four hundred and ten dollar a month swing between the two plans.
That'd be a pretty good setup to me. Depending on how much the deductible meant to you. Wow, yeah.
Yeah, and you're co-paid for your pharmacy bills.
But that's almost a five thousand dollar bill, that's forty-nine twenty right there. And we ballpark break even on both sides. Within a pretty tight margin.
With those numbers set that way, you could pretty much bounce the who goes where and it should stay even, shouldn't it?
No.
So if we did.
Cause you're, you are. I mean, you're looking at all the employees.
Yeah.
Taking the H D H P option. Or that's the only policy you're gonna offer.
Try putting like twenty and forty on the single.
Well, I. Again, I don't know.
Or I suppose it.
Well, we have to have ten, right?
So that's.
Yes, yeah.
So, so yeah, to your, to your question, yes, it would keep it relatively low.
The glory halved the H D H P advantage.
Yeah.
Because we're within a couple hundred bucks of breaking even.
That was my, I'm trying to find where to, yeah.
So wherever they break out, you're gonna be within profiting or being up a thousand bucks or whatever it was and being negative a couple hundred bucks, so.
So the point that, the part that we're sharing with the employees isn't necessarily the cost comparison, it's mainly the plan comparison? Like, are they gonna, like, how are we doing that? Because.
Are you, you would say that the plan is not going to, I mean, if you were gonna use this as an example, the, there is the traditional health plan with the same deductibles and out-of-pocket maximums that is available. The cost per employee is, for the family in this scenario, is three hundred and fifty dollars per month for that. Or a high deductible plan is available where the deductible, or you could probably just say the out-of-pocket maximum, you're not gonna have any insurance benefits until you've reached thirty-three hundred dollars or sixty-six hundred dollars. No, it was sixty-five? Sixty-six. And the county will contribute up to sixty dollars per month. You aren't gonna have any benefits, health insurance benefits, until you reach that thirty-three hundred or sixty-six hundred, depending on fam, single or family. And the county will contribute six, up to sixty dollars a month.
But, but they, you know, I'm, I'm sorry if I'm not paying full attention, I apologize. But they could put the three hundred and fifty a month into their HSA.
Yeah, there's gotta be something that, yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
So.
They're gonna want to do that, yeah.
I mean, if somebody chooses fifty, I don't think the, I don't think that in the traditional, I think the county matches it up to a certain dollar amount.
Yeah, that's a bit of my experience, but I, I, I don't know if I have a stated statement, so I'll back off.
But, but an employee can put, I, I don't know if there is a limit of.
There is, like, nine thousand dollars, including the lawyer's contribution.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Within the.
Yeah, there's a.
And that might be for old people, I'm sorry, I might be.
But anyway, up to.
Yeah, I don't.
Up to what is.
But, but, but my experience is it's not a one-for-one match, like.
Right.
The one, one we were on two months ago, uh, they were putting in, I believe, a hundred dollars a month, I believe. Don't hold me to this. And, and we could do, or a thousand dollars total, I'm not sure which it was. And then, and you could take, you could do whatever you want. In the example on the board, if, if I'm seeing it right, you, you're, you're, you're not paying three fifty towards your health insurance and the county's putting in sixty to the HSA. So the four hundred and ten dollars a month, which translates into almost, or it does translate into five thousand dollars.
Forty, forty-nine twenty, so you're a hair short of five.
So yeah, you, you run a risk, but you also, at, at the end of the year too, if you have no health problems to speak of, you know, you're ahead of the game and building fast. Uh, that's, that's the kind of, that, that's the kind of incentive it takes to, to move people. And, and that, that's, it, I can, I mean, if you, if you talk as far as wrapping it up, I could, I could show them, I, I could be comfortable showing them, that's what we could've done this year for you. This is, these are the options you could've had. And it is no bearing on what's might get, but this is an educational thing of how they work. And I might even be inclined to, to move the. Yeah, I, I don't wanna muddy the waters, but I might even be inclined to move the health deductible to get it close to, you know, eighty dollars a month, so you're close to a thousand dollars. I, I don't know, but anyway, that's the kind of, everybody says they don't understand and, and we have no idea, again, we, but these were two variables we changed, and there's other variables. There's, there's deductibles and they. There's deductibles that that could be changed, there's, there's others too, we, we've hit on here in that discussion that I.
Out-of-pocket maximum.
Out-of-pocket maximum, that's, that's right.
If you wanna talk about. What the employee feels.
But it's, yeah, as sharp, as far as portraying what could have been, this is what could have been. And, and just, and, and yes, you need an education on this as far as what it does to you, can you ask the question, Donna, about does it impact your I P R?
I did ask it, they haven't gotten any answer. But I did it to the pre-tax.
I, I'm pretty sure, I, I'm telling you from experience, I'm pretty sure it impacts social security, which is a negative, uh, you know, if you go high deductible plan. I, I'm almost positive about that.
That was kind of a concern that some employees had expressed to me as well, that they felt that that would affect them. Whether, I, I mean, I never legitimately got a one hundred percent answer, but it was a concern.
That's, that paints a pretty good picture of what could have been for, for this next fiscal year. We may not like it, that's a whole nother story, but it, it, in both cases, you're close to. Well, I think, of course, it's all, the variable there is how many people sign up for it. You can't control that, although I, I would, in that scenario, I wouldn't be surprised. I mean, though, I would do it if I had to. I don't. I, I, I think I do, because we went with the high deductible plan for. I don't know.
When Michelle was here earlier talking about this. She made a statement that fifty percent of your policies would be a goal. Over.
I believe it.
And if you, with that. You could expect. Around ten percent difference.
With what?
With a fifty percent participation goal, ten percent less cost, how's the.
Total bottom line.
Yeah, health costs that you would be paying for the employer.
The county, the county.
Was out of itself, out of the self.
Um, I know we talked about the school, so to answer who they use, they, they hire Holmes Murphy. As their insurance brokers, um, Joe Carter said they are fantastic, they also help design our plans and will shop your providers every year to make sure you are getting the best deal possible. And they also will provide industry standards for you, which will allow you to compare the benefits that you provide to other public entities that I would like to. So they use one, and it's Holmes Murphy.
And I've been contacted by another company besides.
I don't know who, who.
What's that?
I have been contacted by both Holmes Murphy and another company called Cunningham Butler.
Okay.
Out of Dubuque.
I'm comfortable presenting that, I mean, I know if I was presented with those two options, I'd do the high deductible. And that'd be a no-brainer for us, just knowing our, where we're at in life, but I'm in a different situation than people do.
I guess I, I think we made good progress today, and I do think that's something that could be presented, but, um. The piece of the estimated suggested rates versus what the actual premium cost would be should actually skew that number a little farther towards the high deductible plan, I believe. Um, because the cost would be, well, actually, might skew on both sides, um, because we've just got our contributions in there, but. I, I think it would be worth our time to have another conversation next week and fine tune some of our thoughts here, but I think this is a. Relatively decent comparison too, I just.
Well, I've got another meeting at one thirty, care connections. So fifteen minutes?
Yeah, that's.
Aren't you gonna answer for that? It's zoomed today. I'm gonna zoom it into it. Well, let's. I think we made progress, I think we got a good idea of what. We're leaning towards. That's fine if the board would like to come back and. Find, find one next week, that's fine.
I think. We need to talk about it a little bit more.
Yeah, yeah.
Honestly, maybe it'd be, since we've gotten thus far in the conversation, maybe it'd be need some to have Michelle here next week, whether it's electronic or in person, I don't know, but. That's another piece, I don't know if it'd be.
Maybe she could be available on the phone if we need her or something, or, I don't know.
Doug, do you wanna reach out to her, you want me?
She.
Like Ken, what, uh, what do you want Michelle to? What kind of questions would you like her to answer?
I don't know that I have a list of questions right now, but I think having her available for the conversation would be helpful.
Just maybe see if she'd be available by phone if we needed her, but.
Okay.
We don't, I don't know, we need her.
I don't mind the entire time.
No. In what time do you think it's? I know that I'm gonna be presenting the road program.
Yeah.
Budget.
Seems like we have a busy agenda next week too, um.
It's getting busy. Busier we want to start that on one in the afternoon.
Um. Cause we have.
Well, how much do we have going on?
We have the, we have an eight o'clock reclassification hearing for DD sixty, we have an eight o'clock final reading for animal control ordinance. Um, and then we just have, and, um. The other stuff I don't think will take too long.
Well, I think the, well, with safety, I think we're on our options, cause I think it's.
Yeah, and then we have the review of the county handbook.
Oh.
Okay, that's not.
That's just one point one to one point five, I don't think that'll take very long.
How long will your road program, hour, hour and a half?
Uh, hour, you said.
Eleven maybe? I don't know, maybe you're.
I just think if we're done with our regular meeting at.
What time do we start?
After eleven?
You know. Yeah. We're done with our regular meeting, it's eight, eight ten thirty, and then leave and come back at one, I think that would be silly, but. Yeah.
I would, I wouldn't list it on the agenda at a specific time, but maybe if we can tell Michelle.
I'll talk to Michelle.
Might be between ten and eleven or something.
And if she's not available till after one o'clock, maybe that does adjust one to have a possession too, so, well, have to wait and see. Okay, thank you Doug for, for doing that, or taking the time to make the spreadsheets and Don for being here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, thanks Doug for the spreadsheet, that's helpful. So, all right, well, motion adjourned, Decker.
Second.
Second go after. Any discussion? All in favor of I?
I.
Any opposed, any? Motion carries unanimous for adjourned.